Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim and District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And city attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good afternoon and welcome to the February 28th meeting, a special called meeting of the Columbus City Council. We have a lot of business to conduct this evening, but one of the first things we'll do though is we'll ask God's presence on our chambers. And I'd like to invite Mr. Derek Hay, Director of Student Ministries from St. Luke. Mr. Hay, welcome, sir. If you would, push that button and I'll get that microphone turned on.
All right.
That's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, thanks for having me. It's an honor to be here. Bow your heads with me and let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we come before you with humble hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom. We pray for the leaders of this city, that they may be filled with your grace and your love as they make decisions that impact the lives of the people they serve. We pray for unity among all those who call the city home, and that we may work together to create a better tomorrow for ourselves and for future generations. Help us to set aside our differences and come together in a spirit of cooperation and compassion. Lord, we also lift up the teenagers and students of our town to you. We pray that you would guide and protect them at their schools, and that you would bless them with the same opportunities that we have enjoyed. May they be filled with a hope and optimism for the future, and may they be inspired to work towards a better Columbus. Finally, Lord, we ask you for your continued blessings and guidance as we move forward as a community. May your light shine upon us, may we know our worth is in you, and may we always seek to do your will in all that we do. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Hay, thank you, sir, and thank you, please thank St. Luke for sharing you with us this evening. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session.
All right, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss to discuss land acquisition and personnel. Mr., hang on, Mr. Fay?
Yes, sir. For the record, the two items would be real estate acquisition and disposal and personnel.
All right, all those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, we are in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate y'all being here a little early, but we gotta ask you to clear the chambers. And counsel will start with the item on property. Excuse me. Excuse me. Thank you for your patience. We're sorry for the inconvenience of having you leave the room and then come back in, but we did go into executive session, discussed property acquisition and personnel, and there were no votes taken. So we'll move on to the agenda. First thing is the minutes from the February 14 meeting. Motion second to approve those minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. We've got a couple of proclamations. The first one is on, whoop, I lost my it's on Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and Counselor Barnes will read that.
Will the representatives come forward, please? It is my pleasure to read this proclamation. I gotta wait till everybody gets up here first. Don't wanna leave any, there we go. Byron wanted to be sure I didn't leave him out, that's why he was waiting to the end. And this proclamation reads thusly. It says, whereas in 1987, President Ronald Reagan established that the month of March would henceforth be Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to increase public awareness of the needs and the potential of Americans with developmental disabilities, and also to provide the encouragement and opportunities they need to lead productive lives and to achieve their full potential. And around 2 million people in the United States currently have an intellectual or developmental disability. Whereas Community Service Boards are the largest providers of adult developmental disability services in the state of Georgia, and New Horizons Behavioral Health is the Community Service Board providing developmental disability services to 194 adults in Muskogee County. And whereas the community has a responsibility to support the inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all facets of community life, as well as to increase awareness of the barriers that people with disabilities still sometimes face in connecting to the communities in which they live. And whereas we recommit our community to increasing awareness and inclusion of individuals living with a developmental disability and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people living with a developmental disability at all stages of their lives. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, Skip Henderson, does hereby proclaim March 2023 as developmental, as intellectual and developmental disability awareness month in the city of Columbus, Georgia.
Wait, just, hang on just a second. If you would, push that, there it is, they've got it on, there you go.
Okay. I'm Joanne Mosley, I'm the IDD Coordinator for New Horizons. On behalf of our loving individuals that we serve and their families, we thank you so much for this. I would like to thank the CEO of New Horizons, Ms. Andrea Winston, also our clinical director, Mr. Denise Wade, and also our CFO, Susan Gallagher. Also, we have staff here that works with the IDD program. We have Jermaine Suggs.
Ms., excuse me, why can't you just have them come up to the mic and introduce themselves?
Yes.
I'm Jermaine Suggs, I'm the case manager for the IDD SCP program. SCP is the program where we train individuals on daily living skills and we it's like a training point to get them to out in the workplace.
Well, don't be shy.
Hi, I'm Tawana Griggs, I'm the Residential Services Coordinator, IDD Developmental Disability, where our residents reside in a home.
Hi, I'm Kay Ellison, I'm Ms. Mosley's administrative assistant.
Hi, my name is Joyce Green, I'm the Program Director for SCP Inneday Services.
Also, I would like to thank all the dedicated direct service workers. They are our backbone, and they are the reason that we keep going for our love in the future. Thank you all for all your appreciation.
You got a couple of other people?
Yes, my name is Damon Hoyer, I'm the board chair of New Horizon, I'm just part of the support team.
My name is Byron Hickey, I'm the CHA Director with New Horizon.
Hi, I'm Denise Wade McLeod, I'm the Clinical Director for New Horizons, and on behalf of Ms. Andrea Winston, who due to, is unable to be here this evening, she wanted me to extend her thanks and gratitude to the city of Columbus and to the council. So thank you for all that you do for New Horizons, we greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely, if you could.
Chloe Landreth?
Oh, we got two more, sorry.
Chloe Landreth, Marketing and Outreach for New Horizons.
And the CFO, the Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Susan Gallagher.
Hello, everybody, Susan Gallagher, New Horizons Behavioral Health, and just thank you for this opportunity to be here and shine a spotlight on the staff, the great staff that we have, that provides services to individuals who are often overlooked.
And Mr. Mayor, please allow me a minute?
Sure.
On the reason that I highlight, this is an organization, there's a lot of other great organizations in this marvelous city that we call Columbus, organizations that really reach out to people. And New Horizons does that. A lot of, a segment of the population are the intellectual and developmental disabilities, individuals who, we are blessed, individuals who want to overcome and do overcome their disabilities intellectually and developmentally. But to have an organization like New Horizons that actively seeks them out, actively helps them. And the reason that I know so much about them is years ago, 10 years ago, I was the outpatient nurse there. And I went home to my wife and I said, I don't know whether I want to stay with this company here because they had so many people they were treating for free. I was wondering, say, we gonna get a paycheck? Not that I begrudge it, but it was, it was so heartwarming to see an organization that would serve the community irregardless of their green piece of paper with our good president's order. And so I remained in relationship with them and sent a number of people who, for want of self-esteem, do not want to come forward, but this organization will grab them, nurture them, and bring their full potential over their intellectual and developmental disabilities that they have, and I just think that is an awesome thing, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that.
Great, y'all come around, let us shake your hand, give him another hand.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
I'm gonna give you all of these.
Appreciate you.
Or just call the office and we'll get some more printed.
Thank you for what you did. Appreciate you. How you doing? I like that suit. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
You need to call me.
Thank you. Thank you for seeing me.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you, friend. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hickey? All right, and on February 18, we celebrated Arbor Day. And of course Lisa Cuts did a fantastic job to keep Columbus beautiful and all the different activities out there. We've got a resolution that we want to present to them. I'm gonna ask Counselor Crabbe. And if we could get the folks from KCBC to come on up. Yeah. Yeah, and I just, just so people know, the reason that podium is shifted is we've got one camera out, and the camera that will see you now, that's why it's turned a little bit.
Thank you for letting me read this into the record. Arbor Day and I have something in common. We both originated in Nebraska. Whereas Columbus, Georgia was the first city in the state of Georgia to earn the certification as a Tree City USA. And whereas Columbus, Georgia celebrated the 45th anniversary of Arbor Day on Saturday, February 18, 2023, by planting trees at Lake Bottom Park. And whereas the celebration included an Arbor Day ceremony, educational activities, seedling giveaways, demos, food, and fun. And the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Trees Columbus, Inc., UGA Extension, Oxbow Meadows Environmental Learning Center, Columbus Parks and Recreation, and the Columbus Consolidated Government's Urban Forest and Beautification Division partnered in the celebration. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic viability of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Columbus City Council and the National Arbor Day Foundation urged citizens to support tree planting, efforts to enhance beautification, and increase the tree canopy coverage throughout the city. And whereas the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Trees Columbus, Inc., UGA Extension, Oxbow Meadows Environmental Learning Center, Columbus Parks and Recreation, and the Columbus Consolidated Government's Urban Forest and Beautification Division are partners in their effort to encourage citizens to plant and protect trees for future generations. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does proclaim Saturday, February 18, 2023, as Columbus Arbor Day. Thank you so much. We had a great celebration on February 18. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager for your continued support. I have some of my environmental partners with me today. We had so many, all of them couldn't be present today, but again, thank you for your continued support. And while we have a large audience right now, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege and say, we need help to get Columbus clean. So my number is 706-225-4008.
You wanna introduce the folks? You wanna introduce the folks that are here with you?
Yeah.
Representing?
Good evening, my name is Karen Hammond, I'm the Administrative Assistant for Keep Columbus Beautiful.
Eric Ganzauer, Forestry Administrator for the city and Senior Arborist.
Who's your helper?
And I'm Dorothy McDaniel, I'm Executive Director of Trees Columbus. And hiding here is my daughter Lucy May, who has planted many, many trees, so she got to kind of
Yes, she has.
Here today.
Well, thank y'all, thank y'all, it was, it was an amazing day. I mean, it really, it had so many activities out there, and it was just, all the partnerships that showed up was really outstanding. We look forward to the next one. And I'll echo what Lisa said, they need help trying to keep Columbus clean. So take care of your area, and maybe everybody will do the same. Y'all come around, let us thank you again. All right. We have a presentation of a limited scope performance audit on Uptown Columbus, and our internal auditor Donna McGinnis is gonna present that.
Good evening, everyone, I realize you're receiving your reports. The audit was, let's move things right along here. The audit was first authorized by City Council on January 3 of 2023. Okay. Once authorized in January, we're going to move on to the audit scope. And, there we go. During site visits, processes were reviewed both within the Finance Department and at Uptown Columbus, Inc. Historical point of sale records, tax filings, insurance binder, remittances, maintenance and repair records, and lease agreements and addendums were reviewed at both offices. In the findings, during the 10-year agreement, Uptown Columbus, Inc. has been led by three different presidents, and the monthly reporting, remittance, and compliance varied under each leader. While all equipment was newly purchased at the execution of the agreement, as years went by, there had been deferred maintenance from mid-2017 until March of 2020. Current President Mr. Ed Wolverton has been attentive to maintenance issues and has brought them forward to counselors, seeking authorization to utilize designated reserves. Prior to March of 2020, there had been more sporadic remittances with three to four checks received in most years, with each check covering a period of three to four months of activity. Under Mr. Wolverton's leadership, we receive monthly remittances each month for the prior month, two weeks after the month has ended. In continued findings, seasonally, there is an impact upon sales activity at both the rafting and zip line venues. Peak activity occurs in the summer months, with less activity in the spring, and a significant decline in the winter months. There were dates where winter conditions, weather conditions generally, did not allow for activity, and the venues were closed for two months at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Holidays such as Thanksgiving and Christmas did not have activity. In audit recommendations, the current leadership of Uptown Columbus, Inc. is performing responsibly, both in terms of revenue sharing under the lease agreement, and is addressing maintenance and needed repairs at the Chattahoochee River Park. The lease agreement is currently due for renewal, and based upon audit observations and findings, Uptown Columbus, Inc. can be expected to continue their responsible performance in the months and years ahead. Do we have any questions tonight? I have attached, just generally for a, for benefit of, of the seasonality to your report. You see a graph that basically shows you, you know, that the peak, you see how the zip line tends to do a little bit better than the rafting in the dead of winter, you know, that type of thing. The point of sale reporting, I've had a chance to review, and, and we are receiving an accurate stream of revenue. It is proprietary data, and as a result, you know, cannot be released in this forum. But I wanted to assure you that, that the hands were on it, and we're getting responsible remittances at this point.
Okay, doesn't appear to be any questions.
Now, the other item that I have before you, I'm seeking authorization for a transitional audit. Admittedly, there's a plan to have more of a, an audit request list, but recently, we have lost some, some key personnel in the Civic Center. And as a result, I would like to have your authorization to at least begin scheduling them. It won't start tomorrow, but it would be something that we would start as soon as, as soon as feasible. That, you know, in light of the fact that we have transitioned there, it would be important to have auditors arrive.
All right, a motion to authorize the transitional audit for the Columbus Civic Center, and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next we'll move to the city attorney's agenda. Your city attorney?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Haven't seen a crowd quite this big since the Peach Bowl, but we will move on down our half dozen items here and get some votes out of the council. The first item up is the zoning at 212 Railroad Street, going from General Commercial to Uptown.
Motion and second to approve, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you queue it, and counselors, you can register your votes, please. This and a couple. Button's still not working. All right, and
I get everybody?
Counselor Koppel? All right. You voted affirmatively? That's it, okay. No, yours did. Okay, that's approved.
All right. Next item is the Unified Development Ordinate Text Amendments for the Medical Cannabis Dispensaries Authorized by State Law.
Motion second to approve item two, any discussion? Please queue it, and counselors, enter your vote.
Next item is the approval of the zoning changes for those property owners holding conservation use assessment.
Motion second to approve item three, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, again, please queue it. And that passes.
All right. Next item is the prohibition on the download of TikTok, WeChat, Telegram on laptops, city devices.
Motion and a second to approve item four, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, please queue the screen and counselors vote. That's approved.
All right, now our last ordinance vote needs to be the mid-year FY23 budget.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve item five, is there any discussion? All right, please queue it. And that's approved.
Okay, our last item is a resolution appointing Robert Watkins, Sr., and Robert L. Wilson to a four-year term as Recorders Pro Tim.
All right, there's a motion second to approve the resolution authorizing those two Pro Tims. Any discussion? All right, please queue it. Counselor, you can enter your votes. That's approved.
All right, that's, Mayor, we have one legislative item, there'll be an add-on on the city manager's agenda, but that's all we have.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move on to the public agenda. And what I would remind you is that we, you'll have five minutes, we'll allow you to state your, start with your name and your address. Once you give that, we will move into the timer. At the end of five minutes, we will, we'll have to cut you off if you're not complete. And, and I've been asked by counselors, I, for some, I don't know, we, somebody had heard that there might be retaliation against employees for speaking out. This is a public agenda. No payout, no retaliation against any kind of, of our employees as a result of this, this, this agenda. So anyway, we'll, we'll ask you to stick to the five minutes, and if, and you'll receive, hear a buzzing when it's about over. And we'll get started. First up is Ms. Shannon Williams regarding forgiveness of the tax bill. Ms. Williams? Say your name and your address, please.
Shannon Williams, property address is 4961 Gardner Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31907.
We're having trouble hearing, you might wanna raise the mic up a little bit.
Sorry.
There you go.
Shannon Williams, property address is
So that's your, we need your residence.
My residence, but not my primary residence, property that I purchased. And it's 4961 Gardner Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31907.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, so I purchased a property back in 2010, 2011, and the property got torn down by reeds, if I'm not mistaken. The address that the city was sending the correspondence to was not my address, they were sending it to 1688. My address was 1638 at the time, and around 2000, a couple of years, about probably five years went by, I kept the property boarded up best as I could, kept the grass cut. And apparently wasn't up to the city's standards, and it got knocked down. I'm asking for forgiveness because originally, when the tax bill came out, it was about 8,000, and it has blossomed now to about 24. I just work and I cannot afford that. So I'm asking for, if the city can grant me relief in that manner, I would like to rebuild eventually. So it will help, because there are property owners in the neighborhood, and that way would build the and that way would build the neighborhood up, and it won't just be just an empty lots in there. I'm still paying the taxes on the property, and I am still trying to keep it upkeep as best as I can, which is just keeping it cut and nice and tidy, and I've been doing it. So, yeah, that's, I would just, I would like to rebuild eventually on the property.
Okay, have you, have you perchance spoken with the tax commissioner?
Yes.
Oh, I'm, okay. Mr. City Manager?
I, I believe we're dealing with a demolition lien here, and so the tax commissioner really would not be involved. And of course, you know, I was having her to look up the number of liens just to give you a reference in, in terms of how many pieces of property we have liens on, and it's in excess of 300. I know with my recollection, but she's. And, but a lot of, it's 376 demolition liens and 2,192 weed liens. And, and I share the number with you just to say that we, we have, you know, if we do it for you, we've got to do it for all of those properties, what we have done in the past, and I'm sure we'll do it again. We would have an amnesty period where we would, if you satisfy the lien itself within a period of time, we will forgive the interest. And so I would encourage you to kind of just listen, watch out for one of the times we have an amnesty period and forgive interest if you satisfy the lien itself. Some properties, we go out, we demo them. It may cost $5,000, $10,000 to demo the property. And of course, we put a lien on the, on that property, and if, if that person, if we go 10 years without that person satisfying that lien on that property, it accumulates all of this interest, and over a 10-year period, it may accumulate another $10,000 in interest, and now it's 20, 20,000. And so we would forgive the interest during an amnesty period, and, and that's all I could maybe offer at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Counselor Thomas?
Manager, is there anything that council needs to do to further that? That sounds to me like this is our normal procedure.
It, it is our normal procedure, and, you know, I, I'm sure we will come back to you at some point to ask you to approve an amnesty period, and that's just to kind of get some of it off the books. And so I, I would just encourage her to look for, watch out for when we would ask council to allow for an amnesty period.
And typically, would someone from your staff be in touch with Ms. Williams about all of this? Or she get in touch with them?
No, we, we will advertise and promote it, but we are not collecting a list of people that we would call and say, we're in an amnesty period.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Well, and, and staff has said, we do send letters to all of those of record to let them know that there is an amnesty period.
All right, ma'am, that, there's no other comments, I think, so, thank you. Just watch for the, that notification.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, next is Mr. Isaac Brown, representing Community Citizen Services Watch Program, Inc. regarding announcing the re-established Community Citizen Watch Program. Mr. Brown, you name an address, and the timer will start once you do that.
Mayor, Councilman, ladies and gentlemen, a few years ago, 1951 to be exact, 1951 to be exact. Think about it, think about it, 1951. Up in East Harlem, on 38th Street, that's where I lived. One day, my mother sent us over to a, a service station to pick some drinks up. The drinks was five cents apiece, five cents a bottle. Two weeks later, the lady said that the drinks was going up. It was going up one cent, and it was a wall in East Harlem, a big wall, because the drinks was going up to six cents. I said all that to say this, we living in the 21st century now. The 21st century. You can't get a drink anymore for five cents or six cents. You can't do that. We've been on a mission here for quite some time. In, in 19, to be exact, when I believe so, old Judge Bobby Peters. He used to come to my halfway house on Buna Vista Road, and he used to, he drove a white vehicle. He used to come in and counsel the drug addicts and what have you. Also, at that same time, John Amos, that started Applejack. He stopped by one day at my halfway house and say, hey, Isaac, what are you doing? And I told him, I want to go to Musco County School District. Musco County School District sent busloads of people, schoolteachers, over at the halfway house on Buna Vista Road to get trained by talking to the drug addicts and alcoholics. Since that time, times have changed. It's changing day by day. We looking at our city, this is my home. We looking at this city, but this is my home. If this is my home, I am concerned about what's going on in my home, where I live at. We need to be more concerned about our home than across, across the ci, uh, across the river. We need that real bad. I'm kind of upset right now because I've been hearing some things. We was trained by the police department, watch this. We was trained by the police department to ride with them at night. We would, we rode with the shaft department, the marshal department. We rode with them at night, looking at what was going on in our city. And from that time to this time, we see something. Are we really concerned about Columbus, Georgia? Instead of fighting people, that has trained people to help other people in the community, but they rather fight those people that has trained people. We have been actually trained, Mayor, Councilman, to look out for our community, but it seems like to me we are fighting each other. For some strange reason or another, we are fighting one another instead of doing something for our city. Mayor, we tired. Mayor, we tired. We very tired. We shouldn't do that, Mayor, Councilman. Isaiah Hughley, City Manager? I talked to you a few weeks ago pertaining to a building on Victory Drive, am I right? That building, I walked through that building, Mayor, Councilman, ladies and gentlemen. That building is exactly what we need to train our people from going to jail for little or nothing. That building, my paperwork on that building is right there. Can we get, I, I want each and every councilman to get a copy of that. Do you have it? Do y'all have it? Do y'all see that? Do y'all see what, I went through a lot of stuff. I did my homework. Mayor, we need that building. We need that building like you never known. That building has TVs in it. It has computers in it, just like you, I'm looking at right now. It has everything that we need to train people to make our city better. I'm there. I'm asking you, Mayor, I've been knowing you a long time. Pop Barnes, I've been knowing you too long. Brotherhood, I've been knowing you a long time. I want you, the mayor, Pop Barnes.
Mr. Brown.
And this guy here, Isaiah Hughley.
Mr. Brown, I hate, I hate to do this, especially, especially since you and I have known each other for so long. But, but I, your time is up. I can't give you any more time. But, but I tell you what, if you want to come to the office, we'll talk about this building and talk about some of the plans that you've got, okay?
Okay, I thank you, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate you.
Mr. Mr. Brown, I, I don't see Josh. I was going to get him to come. Can we, can you get somebody to get his contact information? You have it, okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, next is Ms. Marie Klyat, representing the Tree of Life Health, Tree of Life Healthcare.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your name and your address, please, ma'am.
My name is Marie Klyat. I reside at 8153 Chapel A Drive, Milton, Georgia. To the elected mayor of our great city, Columbus Consolidated Government, Skip Henderson, to our city councilors, our city manager, I stand before you this evening in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I'm here today as a volunteer consultant to the acting CEO and director of Tree of Life Healthcare, speaking on their behalf regarding the recent theft this month and in December of 2022 of Tree of Life HVAC and air consistent system parts. Tree of Life Healthcare is located at 2200 North Avenue here in Columbus, Georgia. Several medical practices and facilities located on and in the area of North Avenue, Hamilton Road, Tarleton Road have experienced the same. Also, some of our churches and houses of worship have had Cadillac converters stolen from their vehicle. The names that I will be reading now have given me permission to read their names, some of the businesses that have been affected, and just want y'all to know, at least 30 that we are aware of in the area of Tarleton Road, North Avenue, Hamilton Road, and portions of Manchester Expressway have been victims of these thefts. Grown Room Daycare, they've had four stolen and five damaged, and they have a security cage. Dr. Patheon Ford units, Dr. Vernon one unit, Southeastern Gastro, two units damaged, two units removed, and Fortele three, Dr. Harper two units, Tree of Life, three units. And the reason I say the ones that we are aware, some of the churches, as I said before, have had, their vehicles had Cadillac converters taken. HVAC and AC units and Cadillac converters have different functions, but they share something in common that buyers are willing to pay for, and it's the precious metals. You may have noticed that I didn't reference the persons or persons committing the theft, because if there's no willing buyers, then more than likely, the theft won't occur. Now, I don't suspect that anyone is knocking on our mirror, our counselor, city manager, nor the majority of our citizen doors offering to sellers copper or any other of the metals found in these items. The persons or person committing these acts are aware of, and they know who the willing buyer or buyers are. The state of Georgia and Columbus Consolidated Government have laws, codes, ordinance pertaining to the selling and buying of these metals. And I must say that they leave a lot to be desired, particularly the ordinance that we have here in Columbus, Georgia. Nothing that I have read nor understand will really deter the buyer nor the seller when looking at these laws, codes, and ordinance. And apparently, this is not only my interpretation, because what appears to mean to be the lack of attention given to these offense and the lack of follow-up with the victims tell me that CCG feels the same way. My understanding is that there is one of the practices that I mentioned earlier that had a video system camera recording of the suspect, the suspected person who had vandalized or stolen from their property with an interaction with the Columbus Police Department officer around about a time when most of us are sleeping in the early hours of the morning. My understanding is that there was a conversation that took place. The person who stole the items had apparently stashed them in an area where the police officer could not find them. And if you need to know more about that situation, I can provide you with that information. In closing, I guess you could say there are several recommendations or suggestions that could be given to control and eliminate this problem, but the one recommendation that we believe will prevent and solve 99.9% of these copper and precious metal thefts is enforcement of the laws and codes and ordinance that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next, Mr. Donald Mailer, regarding care for veterans in Columbus with PTSD and oral health care. Welcome, Mr. Mailer. If you would, start with your name and address, please.
Is this good?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me back there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to take five minutes of your life. I hope it's important. I'm here to talk about PTSD and our, oh, my name and address, I have PTSD, I'm sorry. I do. 3416 North Quay, Columbus, Georgia, and my name is Dr. Don Moller. Does it, timer starting now?
It does.
Okay. I'm here to talk to you about PTSD. This is like an awareness talk, but it's more like a revelation talk. Rambo is not the classic case of PTSD. Your veterans are out there. They're living a quiet life suffering. You can't see PTSD. Our first responders, EMTs, nurses, EMT, emergency room people, have PTSD. What does it present like? Not like the movies tell you. I'm here to talk about the oral health component, component of PTSD. I'm a physician and a dentist and a PTSD researcher, and yeah, I publish papers. Oh, yeah, I'm drifting away two places. So anyway, what I'm here to talk about is family, friends, acquaintances, need to know that the guys with PTSD are having a rough life. You don't get a good night's sleep with PTSD. You wake up with headaches with PTSD. You grind your teeth with PTSD. Your muscles hurt all the time with PTSD. PTSD affects your cardiovascular system, your endocrine system, your nervous system, and on and on. Why would it not affect your jaws? Why would it not affect the muscles in your face, okay? Why am I here? I think I am proposing to have a situation where our first responders and people who don't want to be recognized and don't want to have this on their record can be treated in a quiet place with no identification. Why? Because I was in the military as a private, and I worked my way up to lieutenant colonel. I can guarantee you that if you walk in as an oral maxifacial surgeon and say, hey, guess what? I have PTSD. The first time you yell in the operating room, you're, you're going to be raking leaves, okay? That's how that game is played. So we have an unseen disorder that affects 3 million veterans and millions of Americans. And why am I telling you about this? If you find your anger threshold is changing, you need to be aware. Your inner family relationships can be affected. Your relationships with your spouse can be affected. Your support group needs to be increased. If you're a veteran, a fireman, firewoman, you need to get a support group. You need to have people that you know that are going to support you, and you have to have that ready. Do not lose your support group. Number two, you cannot get through life feeling that you're worthless and have no value. Suicide goes way up in PTSD, and it's not gradual. These people, the predictive things statistically are, if there's 10,000 people, so many will commit suicide. That doesn't help diagnose suicides and PTSD. It's rapid and it's sudden. If you're depressed, depression and PTSD follow like this. Traumatic brain injury increases problems in PTSD. So I would like to propose, and I'll discuss funding later, five minutes isn't the time to do it, but it can be done very cheaply for under $10 apiece. I'd like to open a clinic or have part of the dental clinics in this town designated so that first responders, veterans that can't do it, can come in and be checked. Remember, PTSD affects, it's not a drill-and-fill dental problem. It's a craniofacial dental problem, and I just want. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I wouldn't mind staffing that clinic, and I also wouldn't mind providing the materials. But I want to get something done for the people to have that unseen disease. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir. Next up is Mr. Paul Olson, regarding the chief of police, OLOS sales tax, insubordination to the police chief.
My name is Paul Olson. I live at 1383 Uptoy Lane. I'm wearing this hat because I'm a major. I had three successful company commands and a battalion command. One command, 700, the battalion command, 700. So, I kind of know what I'm speaking about when it comes to command structure.
Yes, sir.
I have come before you today to stop the hanging figure of Chief of Police Freddie Blackman. FOP President Lieutenant Ralph Dow has waged a revengeful character assassination campaign directed to undermine Chief Blackman's credibility. A year ago, he came before you with a survey that he created from the FOP with a low confidence vote of Chief Blackman. I also asked if there was deputy sheriffs that also voted into that because of the pure fact that they don't even, they're not even under his command structure. Lieutenant Ralph Dow has been passed over for promotion by Chief Blackman and with the approval of Mayor Henderson. So, you also approved Mayor Henderson, according to the EOC. Lieutenant Dow was not promoted. However, according to the respondent's statement from the law firm of Page, Granham, Sprouse, Tucker, and Ford, which is funded by the city council and released on August 4th, 2021, reads as follows. Lieutenant Dow's EOC charge essentially claims that all minority and female candidates promoted to leadership positions in the last few years for the Columbus Police Department have been underqualified for those roles. That's a quotation while you responded, the law firm. Okay? That's a very racist remark coming from a supervisor and a lieutenant and a FOP president. This comment was made by Lieutenant Dow during Chief Boren's tenure. This is 2021. This is back in 2018, a few years ago. This position is not supported by fact, this position is supported by facts, according to the law firm. Chief Blackman was not the only chief to have passed on promoting Lieutenant Dow. Chief Boren, who's a white male...
Mr. Olson, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we could...
Can you stop?
I did. Can we refrain from using names? Are you able to go through that? Well, I just... I understand, but there's...
He got up in front of here, Mayor Henderson, and he basically attacked his own superior officer as a subordinate. And he did it through a questionnaire, and everybody doesn't have all the information on that questionnaire of how many people actually voted who were deputy sheriffs that weren't even under his command. And I'm just telling you as a battalion commander, and your father's a lieutenant colonel, and he and I are friends, he helped me get my real estate license, okay? And I'm just, I'm just telling, and I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you right now.
Well...
I carried his books down.
I'm asking you, let's, yeah, let's, I'm asking, try to stay away from the names if you can.
I can't because he had, he did not refrain, Mayor Henderson. If a man doesn't refrain from using names, then I'm not gonna refrain. That's my First Amendment rights.
Continue.
Okay. So, he chose not to promote Lieutenant Dow to captain. So, despite having multiple opportunities, he had several opportunities to do this. Therefore, Lieutenant Dow cannot show discrimination existed. The public has been kept in the dark for a year and a half by Mayor Henderson and his city council of this valuable information. Most people don't even know that Ricky Boren passed him over. Okay? Why are we finding out from Paul Olson? God help us all. Lieutenant Dow filed a lawsuit six months later allegedly on reverse discrimination. In fact, it would be revealing why Chief Boren passed him over so many times. Chief Boren needs to come before this council and explain why he passed him over. Loyalty is one of the most important elements of command, even sometimes over competency. I'm telling you right now, if a person isn't loyal, guess what? He's not gonna get, he could be the most competent person out there, have all the qualifications, but if you can't trust him, then you don't need him by your side, okay? It says, also, also why did Lieutenant Dow not file a lawsuit against Chief Boren and former Mayor Tomlinson, when in fact he was passed over multiple times? I'm asking you guys, why, why didn't he do that? He waited for his time with a black chief of police and wasn't to create racial divide. You can hear from his comments before that's driven by racism. I've been passed over before. I've never cried, never cried. I'm not, I'm not a crier, okay? However, in my opinion, as a retired major from the army, he is considered blatantly in violation of insubordination. Lieutenant Dow publicly reprimanded Chief Blackman by engineering an FOP questionnaire to subversely discredit his superior officer. First of all, he's a lieutenant. He works for the chief. You do not create a questionnaire challenging the leadership of your own. Your first, your first obligation, your first obligation, your first obligation is to your chief. And then to involve other people, that's like a mutiny on the bounty. I'm telling you, okay? Counselor John House, I'm asking you, retired colonel, if you were a brigade commander and one of your lieutenants had publicly insulted you within charge of incompetence, I'm sure as I'm standing here, Colonel House would proceed with punitive action, Article 89 UCFJ, and pursue it with a court martial with a chapter 10. And I'm recommending to you, mayor and council, that Lieutenant Dow has committed insubordination, and he has in his FOP leadership role ceded unrest and racial divide. Therefore, you should immediately after the lawsuit is discharged, and I'm sure it's gonna be, relieve him for cause and force him to retire from the police department. We don't need a bad apple spoiling the entire barrel. The leading cause for many years is that the police have been underpaid, which has led to low morale. Chief Blackman has taken the brunt of this blame. He has been handicapped because he works at the pleasure of the mayor and city council. The blame has been with past mayors and this mayor and city council because you passed Resolution 226-08, which designated 70% of the OLOS funds, which were committed specifically for public safety. Okay? Instead, over $20 million has been diverted to the general fund because whenever you don't hire the 130, 130 times 40,000, that's $5.2 million, it goes to the general fund. You don't tell the people that. You don't tell the people that it goes into the revert, to the reserve fund, which we have over $20 million of the OLOS money of giving higher pay rate raises. You know, you don't tell them that, okay?
Your time's up, Mr. Olson.
But you are to blame. You need to take a look at the mirror and say, you did not spend that money properly, and that's why you're complicit of the crime wave that we have in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you.
Thank you, God.
And I, and I won't, I won't... All right. Excuse me, we've, we've got, we've got a long, long list of folks wanting to speak, so let's be courteous. Next is Mr. Buford King, regarding citizens concerned for their safety at Lake Bottom. Mr. King, if you would, start with your name and your address, please, sir.
My name's Buford King. I reside at 7883 Warm Springs Road. Mr. Mayor, city manager, and council, thank you for letting me be here today to speak to y'all. I'm here to speak about the safety concerns at Lake Bottom Park and the continued crime in Midtown. Lake Bottom is an asset to Columbus and is the city's most utilized park. As you all know, there was a shooting last Sunday, February 19th, on a Sunday afternoon in Lake Bottom. This was a beautiful Sunday with many people enjoying the park. I'm a coach, a parent, and a board member of Peach Little League. Peach Little League held 14 practices on this Sunday. Several teams were practicing when the gunshots erupted. A text message went out from one of the coaches alerting of the shooting and to please check on the safety of the players, coaches, and parents. Thankfully, a true miracle, no one was injured in the shooting from Peach Little League or any of the patrons in the park that day. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident. Just 11 months ago, I contacted Counselor Garrett and the mayor's office about a shooting that happened in the basketball court right next to a Little League practice. The gunshots in Lake Bottom have become a reoccurring theme, and it's got to end. To see the horror on these children's faces when they hear a gunshot is heartbreaking. This is supposed, this is supposed to be a time of fun for them and not, and not a war zone. Instead of practicing fundamentals, some coaches are teaching children how to get down if there's a gunshot. Excuse me. Instead of, Peach Little League is now having to hire off-duty police officers to secure our games with funds that were supposed to be used for safety equipment and field improvements. I'm here today for the children and the citizens of Midtown to ask you, the elected officials of Columbus, to secure Lake Bottom and stop the crime and violence in Midtown and Columbus. Is it going to take an innocent citizen enjoying the park to be shot for true action to happen? I asked for help 11 months ago, and it has fallen on deaf ears. The people here tonight are tired of hearing gunshots, tired of their cars being broken into, tired of bodies being dumped on their streets, and most importantly, tired of nothing being done. I was told by the mayor's office that there hasn't been enough time for the crime prevention policies to take effect, and after the election, real change would be made. Counselor Garrett has written emails to the city officials urging for help and resources in Midtown, and nothing changes. Thank you, Counselor Garrett, for hearing our voices. Since the shooting a little over a week ago, only one department has helped. Friday night, multiple sheriff deputies were all over Lake Bottom pulling over offenders. You could see the blue lights from Gerard Street to 13th Street. Thank you, Sheriff Countryman, for showing strength of force and committing officers for our opening day for Little League. It's going to take more than one department, one night, to stop these problems from happening. We need proactive policing to secure, to secure our city. This past week, I have talked to police officers and city officials. I have learned that only 11 police officers generally patrol the entire city every night. I have learned of the police department being severely understaffed. I have learned of low morale and leadership issues within CPD. I have learned of pay compression for our officers. We can't be serious about crime if these issues are not addressed. To me, it seems simple. Three Rs. Recruit, retain, and reward.
That's right.
We need to recruit more officers. We need to retain the officers we have now, and we need to reward these fine men and women that do a great job for our city every day. We need to use... I lost my place again, sorry. We need to, we need to use the money from OLOS to pay our officers, officers the money they deserve and release emergency funding to get more officers on the street. All of these people here tonight are tired of crime and won't change. Enough is enough. No one cares about how much money we have in the reserve fund. Every extra penny from our tax dollars should be spent on fighting the crime problem in Columbus, Georgia. You were all elected to represent the community and make decisions for the well-being of its citizens. Please stand up and fight for us. Use the mechanisms you have to demand crime be on the forefront of the city's agenda. It's time for action. Evil triumphs when good men do nothing. Right now, evil is winning. For the citizens of Midtown, the Columbus community, and the great children of Peach Little League, please protect our parks and our communities and make securing Columbus priority number one. Thank you.
Well said, sir. Thank you, Mr. King. Next is Ms. Sally Lassiter, regarding a desire to help our community rebuild the strong family values.
I am Sally Lassiter, 6855 Ranch Forest Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31904. Has this been an amazing meeting? Look at all of us. We all are saying in one word or another the very same thing. As council members, as mayor, as elected officials, we've come to you to beg you to help us reunify this city. My husband and I came to Fort Benning in 1979. I watched as a former school superintendent and then as a school board member from Muskogee County and as the director of Girl Scouts, I watched harmony, harmony. That was 79. That was 80. What's happened? And you all can make the difference. I'm not gonna talk about all the things I wanted to discuss tonight. They've all been said. In other words, the theme is the same. We're here as citizens. We'll do whatever might work. We, we had, yes, and we still have Keep Columbus Beautiful. Remember when we started United Beyond 2000? That was a great program. But we're drifting. We don't have to drift. The Chattahoochee River will take care of that. So, I'm gonna... I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste any more time, except I'm begging you, take the leadership, bring us back together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Lassiter. Next, Ms. Nadine Moore, regarding the 2003 public safety infrastructure and the 2008 public safety infrastructure. Ms. Moore, if you'd start with your name and your address, please, ma'am. Your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Nadine Moore, and I live at 925 Charleston Avenue, Columbus, Georgia. Well, everybody's saying everything, but I just wanna let, remind some of you that we had a hard time getting that OLOS pass. The other county commissioners didn't want to do it because they didn't have one. So, by hook or crook, Haversnire put it on House B of 709. And they had to vote for it because that 709 was Atlanta had to clean up the roof. So, that's how we got the OLOS. When Jim Wetherton ran for mayor, we walked the streets, and the people told us what they wanted.
That's right.
And then when they told us what they wanted, prior to him becoming mayor, he was the chief of police, and he went to heart, heart, magic talk, and they told him what they wanted. Then we walked across Brown Avenue Bridge, which was no longer open to the school board. They wouldn't let you drive across because it was unsafe. So, then when they passed and said, you got it in your capital project page, CC 2012, 70% of the tax revenue is devoted to public safety. Proposed public safety expenditures include adding 100 police officers to the current 388. We ain't got nowhere near that now. Adding new patrol zones. And we went and we, I've been on every street in Columbus. You've got eight, eight districts. You've got 263 streets in District Eight. You've got 193 in District Seven. You've got 365 in District Six. You've got 415 in Five. You've got 388 in Four. You've got 315 in Three, because these are short streets, 324 in One and 354 in, in 324 in Two and 354 in One. That's your eight zones, and with those police officers, it's supposed to be 68 times eight is 64, using the Baylor Plan, four on, four off, and the two of them went 12-hour shifts. I, I send you that. It's the bait, it's like, it's like what, it's like what they do in nursing, like what they do in nursing when they have a shortage. Okay? The man talked about PTSD. I was in Philadelphia doing a nursing project with a policeman named Riza. The police officers work on sympathetic overload. Every time the phone ring, they get sympathetic system, the sympathetic nervous system kicking in. If a man tell me he been a police officer for five years, I can tell you a whole lot about that man. The correctional officers and the, and the sheriff, they do get some shutdown. They get the, uh, parasympathetic, but not the police officer. Every time then, he has to make all those 911 calls. Okay? We did a survey that a base pay for the police officer is $60,000. It's okay for $40,000 for DOC and sheriff. But if that person has a four-year degree, $2,2500 should be added to the base. If it's a master's degree, $5,000. And for compression, you have to give $500 a year to the base for each year of service, and that is how we were supposed to complete that, delete that thing called compression. And for graded, graded rank, it was $250. And if you had a, a, a permanent certification, that's $150. But that, if that was to get rid of this stuff they call compression, and we did that. We walked around and do that. Now, you giving this man, what, 30 days to come up with a plan for, to, to get rid of the crime? Well, then I'm gonna give you two weeks to put in the, I'm gonna give you two, as a citizen of Columbus and a taxpayer. Now, if you look at your thing, I'm at the top, and then see the... Now, if you look at your thing, I'm at the top, and then city council on the mean, and then the rest of y'all under them. Okay? Then you, for two weeks, you give him all the money he needs to get everything.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you, Nadine. All right, next is Ms. Vicki Williams Riley representing Sisters United regarding public safety strategic initiatives. Welcome. Start with your name and your address, please.
Vicki Williams Wiley, 1448 Grove Park Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31904.
Yes, ma'am.
Greetings, Mayor Henderson and City Council members. I stand before you today with concerns about the directive that was provided to our chief of police, Mr. Freddie Blackman. The last time I addressed this council, minus one new member, I stood representing a group of 13 African-American women organizations, appealing to the council to seize the opportunity to assist us in making a positive change in our local community. At that time, I stated that we were mothers who had been pushed to stand in the gap, to stand in the gap for the safety of our children and our families. Also at that time, the crime rate and unsolved case numbers were very high, extremely high. And as a matter of importance, the women of the organization I represented simply felt as though all we had left was to come to our city council members for help. What did the council do to address those concerns? What did city council do to address the concerns of 13 African-American women organizations? We had 6,465 unsolved cases in 2020, 2021. We had 5,597 unsolved cases in 2022. We currently have 490 unsolved cases in 2023. So in 2023, unsolved cases have significantly reduced. However, crime is still unsettling in our community, as it is across the nation and in cities similar to size as Columbus, Georgia. I know this is no longer the city where my great-grandparents allowed me and my siblings to play outside on Bowman Street. I know that. The city has changed, the dynamics have changed, the demographics have changed. But according to the street committee, not on Bowman Street, according to the street committee, there's a coup that has become fixated on terminating our police chief. Can I mention his name, mayor? Our police chief. Okay. The buzzwords are lack of leadership, low morale, and lack of communication. It is not uncommon for employees to be disgruntled when there is a shift in paradigm. But rather than doing a self-evaluation to determine how everyone could work together to make things better, it appears that possibly threats of terminating the chief may be your preferred option. I hope it's not. You provided a directive to the chief to produce a comprehensive strategic plan in 30 days. How do you effectively complete a comprehensive strategic plan in 30 days? Simply put, it's not doable. You expect the chief and his leadership team to define their vision, assess where they are, determine their priorities and objectives, define responsibilities, measure and evaluate results in 30 days. While it's not realistic, it's not realistic. It is unrealistic to expect a comprehensive strategic plan in 30 days. It is expected that you, our elected council members, will be professional, unbiased, and fair with the process and timeframe to complete the process. Lastly, perhaps it will be a great idea for the anonymous donors to hire a therapist who can address, a therapist who can address how different personalities can work together in a professional and functional unit.
Next is Mr. Byron Hickey regarding violence in the city. Mr. Hickey, same drill.
To the mayor and council...
Start with your name and your address, sir.
My name is Byron Hickey. I reside at 532 Honolulu Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31906. I wasn't going to speak about this, but I'm going to address something concerning Lieutenant Dow. What y'all don't know is Lieutenant Dow, the reason he filed his lawsuit about not being promoted was simply because the first two times that he was overlooked by Chief Warren, as you put it, wasn't that he was overlooked, he yielded to the people that had more time than he did. Okay? He was on the captain list, highly promotable. Now, the two people that Blackman promoted, Graham and Deaton, was not on the list as a lieutenant, was not on there, was not on the list, and because they were not on the list is the reason why he's filed his lawsuit. He was highly promoted again, so people need to get their facts right. That's all that I'm saying. So what I'm saying here today is that I retired...
Excuse me, Mr. Hickey, I'm gonna pause it. I'm just gonna remind everybody, when they're up at their podium, be civil and allow them an opportunity to speak their mind, sir. Mr. Hickey?
I was a police detective for over 30 years, with 30 years of service with the Columbus Police Department. I'm here today on behalf of the citizens of Columbus and the men and women of Columbus Police Department. Let me start by saying that Chief Blackman is my friend, and we was partners in two units, the original gang task force and the vice narcotics unit. No matter what the situation is, we should always be able to tell our friends the truth. But I will not put our friendship before the citizens of Columbus. I'm here today concerning the poor leadership of Chief Blackman. Since his appointment, since his appointment, a total of four studies have been done concerning his leadership. All four studies' results are not good. Many of us wanted to see Chief Blackman succeed, but it's not working. Last year, in February, during a council meeting, the FOP, which consists of both black and white officers, presented their survey results of its members, which reveal a no-confidence vote in Chief Blackman's leadership. After presenting the presentation by the FOP, city manager Isaiah Hughley pulled the race card. Now, let me say this, and I want everybody to hear me very clearly. Mr. City Manager, whoever told you that I said you pulled a race card, they told you the truth. I said it then, and I stand and say it here today. That's what you did. And because you pulled the race card, it has created a climate of division in our community concerning Chief Blackman's leadership. This type of behavior is unacceptable and should not be tolerated by the mayor and council. God forbid anyone getting hurt behind this careless and reckless actions. This type of behavior potentially put law enforcement officers in harm's way. I have a question to the council and mayor. Who does city manager work for? The city manager's responsibility is general government, not public safety. Never has this happened before that he's got over to the lane of public safety. So if this is not his lane, why is he there? Citizens of Columbus, ask yourself a question. Is there a hidden agenda behind this performance? Since Chief Blackman's appointment, over 100 men and women, both black and white, left the Columbus Police Department because of his poor leadership. Several white and black officers left the Columbus Police Department and went and worked for Sheriff Brad Countryman, who's a black man. So where's the racism? If they leaving, they're going to work for another black man. Where's the racism? There's no racism. Their leaving has nothing to do with racism, it has everything to do with leadership, poor leadership. On last Friday, on last Friday, I had an opportunity to attend a public meeting at the Greater Bearwood Baptist Church. During this meeting, Dr. Hood asked a question in reference to the Liberty Theater. The response to the question from the city manager was, by the next two elections, the next two elections, there will be a black mayor and a black council. I thought to myself, now, how racist is that? If you're trying to promote and fight racism, why would you make a comment like that? Columbus is a melting pot. It's a military town. So remember, hidden agenda. Let's not forget, racism has no color. It can come from anyone. To the mayor and council, I want you to know that the majority of the citizens of this community support you in this very important matter to hire a new police chief. Time is of essence.
Mr. Hickey, your time is up, sir.
Change is hard, but it's the mayor and council responsibility to make, it's the mayor and council responsibility to make sure that the visitors and law enforcement's officer are safe in our community, that we have good leadership in the police department.
Mr. Hickey, Mr. Hickey, Mr. Hickey, you can't go past the time, sir. You have to take your seat. You have to take your seat, sir. Mr. Hickey, your time is up. Everybody else is abided by that time. We can get the microphone turned back on for the podium. All right, next is Mr. Willie Bellfield regarding crime in Columbus. Mr. Bellfield, if you'd start with your name, sir.
My name is Willie Bellfield, and I reside at 728 Court Drive, Columbus, Georgia, 31907. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and our city councilors. I'm Willie Bellfield, and I stand before you today as a concerned citizen for the safety of our city and the regional tax on our police chief. I have been attending these council meetings since the late Mr. Frank Martin was the mayor and Jim Weldon was the police chief. I have never seen a council before a director of police chief to come up with a strategic plan and report back to council. First of all, the city charter states that the police chief reports directly to the director of public safety, not the city council. The mayor, in my opinion, should have directed the safety to come up with a strategic plan and present it to the city council if they wanted one in a closed executive section, not in public forum. The reason I say this is you don't want publicly put out information on a plan to attack crime. Criminals watch TV also. It's like telling the enemy where and when you're going to attack them and expecting them to still be there when you get there. This is the first time Columbus has experienced such a crime rate. There's a complete crime spree that's going on in Columbus that's unheard of, and it is nationwide, it's not just the city of Columbus. Columbus has experienced this, and there has been, former chiefs have been attacked and scrutinized. There have been too many complaints and scrutinization against Chief Blackman from the day he took office. This man has never had a chance. He inherited a police department with nine officers short from the first day he took office. Not only, his complete command staff retired the month before he took office. The chief had to start to build the command staff from the bottom up. Nobody can be successful until they built trust in their department, and you give them time to do it. We have made national news, whether you know it or not, Columbus, in last week, you were on CNN, okay, talking about the crime that goes on in this city. We are responsible, when I say we, I'm talking about the collective citizens of Columbus, we are responsible for what's going on in Columbus Police Department now because we allowed an officer of the Columbus Police Department to use this podium right here as a public forum to discredit our chief. This officer, in my opinion, and I was the chief, should have been fired for disrespect and subordination. But he accomplished his goal because he caused distrust in the leadership, he caused chaos in the department, and he caused division among the ranks of men and women that serve in that department. Although the mayor and the police chief is responsible for the safety of our city, it's not their sole responsibility to police our city. It is a responsibility for every citizen in this city to help our police and our community. It is your responsibility as directly elected officials of your district to stand up and support your law enforcement in your area. You need to be engaged every single day in your district and find out what's going in your community, in your districts. How many of you have quarterly town hall meetings and let your people know what's going on in your district? How many of you, if it wasn't for our city manager, Mr. Isaiah Hughley, and his deputy city manager, Param Hard, to get up here quarterly and tell us what's going on in our city, some of us would never know in this community. How many of you, city councilors, know where your police precinct is in your district? How many of you have visited that police precinct and talked to that command sergeant and asked them, "How can you help him?" How many of you have showed up at road calls and thanked those officers before they went on duty? How many of you know who your watch commanders are in your neighborhoods? Have you met with them? Mr. Brown and his people? How many of you know that? If we don't take control, and if you don't get involved as our elected leaders, then no one else cares. Do I have one minute, sir?
You got three seconds.
Three seconds, okay. I will just say this, in closing...
Mr. Bellfield, I'm terribly sorry.
Okay, there's no problem, sir.
I apologize, but I have to be consistent. Next is Pastor Adrian Chester regarding the Columbus Police Department.
Adrian Chester, I reside at 2620 Seventeenth Avenue. I know this may be out of order and it's part of my time, but no one listens to Byron Hickey.
Mr. Chester, let's not call names.
Yes, sir. Nobody listens. But I've come to address tonight because throughout our community and also in the media and news, that it appears and it is evident that our police chief is being micromanaged by the city council, is also being micromanaged by subordinates. Those of you all who have utilized and had the opportunity to steward over any organization, you will come to find out that it takes three to five years to implement and bring about cultural change. It takes three to five years to bring about any cultural change. In every issue that Chief Blackman and his staff get up every day to fight, it was already there day one. It was there day one. And as you all consider, and we know that conversations are going on, we hear the conversations, we hear about elected officials meeting with various persons, not only Caucasian elected officials, but African-American elected officials, we know that these conversations are going on. And as you all have... And as you all have these conversations, no matter, as I share with the mayor and share with other elected officials, that the moral issue is, have you all executed justice on behalf of Chief Blackman? That's the moral question, not the political question, but the moral question is, as you all are having these conversations and deliberations, that justice has to be executed. And you may get by with it on this side. You may get by, you may be able to push, you may be able to push a political agenda on this side, but one day you all, all of you all, will stand before God. And have to, and have to get, and have to give, and have to give an account of where you used as a political pawn, or did you stand up for what was right? And also give our police chief what he needs to do his job and stay out of his way. As the city charter states, he is accountable to the mayor, and he should never have to wake up any day that he goes into that precinct, into that headquarters, wondering, will it be his last because he may make the wrong person mad? There is no way to have to do a job. The chief of police is the chief operating officer of the Columbus Police Department. And if his subordinates cannot get in line with his vision, if they cannot, because he is the one that is in charge, leadership does not come from the bottom up, it comes from the top down. And if they cannot get past their personal pettiness, their personal agendas, and circumvent the police chief and call you all and text you all, and you all are utilized, some of you all are utilized as their pawns, there is a great judgment day. That as, as it has been said, that I'm going to have to stand before too. But as you all deliberate, get out of the police chief's way. Hold him accountable, give him his resources, and get back.
All right, next is Ms. Pat Hughley Green regarding CPD's strategic plan report.
Good evening. My name is Pat Hughley Green. I'm a resident of District 1, 3812 Steammill Road. I stand today after watching the February 14th council meeting and even texting some of you in real time. I come before you to express clear rejection of the Jensen Hughes report. It's not at all acceptable that this body would authorize such a report, allow it to be presented in that form to publicly lose decorum and take action on it. And after all of that, you had the audacity to operate under a cloak of secrecy. The report becomes a ghost report, and citizens should believe the tooth fairy delivered it to you? Mayor and council, as a wise person whom I respect, would say, that dog won't hunt. The presentation failed to produce any indicators of verifying the data collected from the supposed interviewees. The questions that I have posed to several media outlets after I saw that piece where that reporter was on to something, the questions are basic from course 101. And that same wise person said, these questions are so basic that, and they are down so low that the goats can get it. How were these interviewees, the people, selected? What were the questions? Who asked the questions? What timeframe was this data collected? What manner or tool was used to collect this data? What role did the presenter play in the collection and analyzing of this data? See, data is important and has to be verified. Having a balanced and appropriate sample is important. It's vital if you want us to believe this report. This now ghost report drove you to pound on your desk, one of you, and in a supposed fierce tone of voice you announced, calling for a complete comprehensive plan now. Another one of you with the geometric, mathematically incorrect analogy of a pyramid base being the weakest part, relegating a true comprehensive plan to a book report equivalency. All of you agreed for CPD to conduct its own comprehensive plan in one month without any real live expert analysis. I waited and text asking, who is going to make the motion to find such a plan? Still waiting on a reply. That is, if you're serious, instead of choreographing and orchestrating this divisiveness. Three important things that I want to leave with you because everybody has said everything else. Number one, a true comprehensive plan takes time and it comes at a cost. A comprehensive plan is a fluid document that becomes a guide to change and move and organizational as those changes occur. Since we got the pastors in the room, it's like the Bible. You can't just read it like a book. Number two, realize that you are a governing body with diverse backgrounds and that CCG employees are the subject matter experts. As the pastor just said, get out the way. Number three, when the police chief comes back before you, be professional and respectful and reject your tendency to be, to humiliate him and put on those nineteen, be nostalgic in those 1950 and 1960 behaviors. You lack decorum and orchestrated divisiveness is the last thing we need. With everything and all that's going on in our community right now, we need to be together, not divided.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next, make sure I got it right. Next is Mr. Jerome Williams representing Fourth Masonic Prince Hall maidens. Is Mr. Williams in, Mr. Jerome Williams? All right, we'll move on to the next registered, Mr. Timothy Veals regarding crime in the city and crime prevention. Mr. Veals, if you would start with your name and your address, sir.
Timothy Veals, 1039 Brook Road, Columbus, Georgia. I ain't gonna hold y'all long. I got about a third grade education. I ain't never seen too much K on my life. Everybody here all be educated, y'all look like y'all educated. It's amazing, we're talking about crime. The way I look at it, you got a little way to start it from. Everybody can carry a gun now. I don't care how many police you got on the phone. You more killing, now you still gonna be killing. You know, you, you know, we don't have to have them permit to carry a pistol. They ain't got no pistol, they got them UZI, whatever they call it. I tell them, you just walk around the street, everybody got a pistol. Ain't nothing, ain't nothing big. I tell them, I don't know about Georgia, but Columbus ought to make a change for that. You know, at least have a license. You should be able to get a license, you know, because we need to get out and vote. Put the right people in office, you know. It's a shame, you got, really, to me, you got baby carrying pistols. I pay up for the police department. If somebody just got in shooting, I'd be scared to go up there now. They're growing bigger than the police, what the police got. You know, it don't make no sense. I tell them, I tell them, it could be my child, your child, you do the crime, yet you got to do the time. Don't care how many money you got, you do the crime, you get these more, you know, you get them all case or whatever, if you do the crime, make sure they do the time. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Veals. Next, Mr. Wayne Hales representing the NAACP. Mr. Hales, welcome, sir. Start with your name and address, please.
My name is Wayne Hales. I live at 1705 Mazor Drive. I'm here representing the Columbus Branch NAACP. The problem with going last and in between preachers, everything has really been said, but we're here today. My frustration with, as the NAACP president, is the conduction of that report that we heard last week. Now, I asked for an open records request, and when I got it back, they told me that they didn't know who paid for the report, they didn't know who, who were the community people they asked to, asked for the report, they didn't know who the business leaders were who had reported. And so my thing is this, whoever pays for the report is going to get the answers they request. And so I, along with Pat Hughley Green, and she said, the NAACP rejects that report. We don't think that it's fair, and until we can get some answers, it's all about transparency. Okay? If you can't tell us, if you, if you cannot tell us who paid for the report, you can't even tell me who they asked questions of. I'm the president of NAACP, nobody asked me. Okay? I also own the Curriaco Latino newspaper. As a publisher, nobody asked me. So if you're not asking the people who have the pulse of the community, then how valid can that report be? And in all of that stating, as the NAACP president and our organization, we stand firmly behind Chief Freddie Blackman. No matter what you say, and we're willing to do whatever, whatever it takes, whatever the decisions y'all may make negatively against him, we're going to be behind you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. Next on the agenda is Reverend Johnny Flakes. Give your name and address, then, please.
Pastor Johnny X. Flakes III, 6798 Riverbrook Trace, Columbus, Georgia, 31904. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Proten, city manager, council persons, and to all citizens of Columbus, Georgia, not only that are seated here, but also who will be watching. I come because I want to bring a reality that many may not be aware of, or many may fail to accept. This is the true reality stated in an article, January the 30th, 2022. Police departments keep hiring black chiefs to repair the damaged cause during decades of white leadership. But turning to black police chiefs to repair the long-rooted cultural cause, culture caused by decades of white leadership and systemic racism has done little to change the culture of law enforcement and has led to some early resignation and unfair terminations. Though seeking to reform troubled departments have been met with intense internal backlash to the changes in their unprecedented leadership, experts say, and they receive few tools to combat it. In some cases, these agencies have huge culture and legal hurdles that exist well before the black chiefs arise. In a 2016 study analysis by Jacinta Gao, Associate Professor at the Department of Criminal Justice at the University of Central Florida, and her colleagues in eight mid-sized to large police agencies, they found the power of the institution itself. Each officer is embedded within an organization and each organization is embedded within the institution. That institution has priorities, norms, and expectations that create what Gao says is a concrete occupational culture among officers across the country. The strength of that culture is often displayed in counties where incoming black chiefs attempt to usher in progressive policies but are met with resistance. This pattern is seen in 2020, a community's first black chief. He soon drew opposition from former officers, the local police union, and conservative community leaders. City council members called on him to resign, and three former police chiefs penned a letter complaining about the decreased morale in the department. This pattern was also seen in Virginia. In 2019, a black police chief stepped down because of leaders pushed the police chief out after efforts tried to usher in accountability measures for officers in the department. In a letter addressed to the community, the police chief detailed events leading to the departure and the internal resistance experienced during that time. The chief stated, and I quote, "As with any organization, there were officers in the department that did not like my style of leadership and did not want me to hold them accountable for their actions." Unquote. The chief wrote, I quote, "Some quite frankly did not like taking direction from an African-American." Unquote. These are only few documented examples what African-American police chiefs are facing across our nation. Mr. Mayor, city council, I stand before this council and community today to say it is sad to point out the reality of that this type of cultural still exists within our Columbus Police Department. It is quite obvious that false narratives have been constructed by a few people to try and mislead this mayor, council, community about Chief Blackman.
Pastor Flakes.
This false.
I apologize, sir. Your time has reached an end. I apologize. I have, have to be consistent and fair. I apologize.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you.
I apologize.
And I would like to stay and come back for my other three minutes to finish, sir.
All right, and next is Mr. Frederick Small representing Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Bailey, okay, all right, thank you. Well, that concludes our public agenda. And we will now move into the city manager's agenda. Turn you. We'll, we'll pause a minute, let everybody have an opportunity to exit. Ladies and gentlemen, we still have business to conclude. So if I could ask you to please exit in an orderly fashion. Wait a minute while you're up. This city manager. Turn your light on. All right, I believe we've got a quorum. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, first on my agenda, approval requested to enter into a four-year agreement with Kissel Entertainment.
Motion second to approve the agreement with Kissel Entertainment. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue the vote. Councillors, you can enter your votes. All right, that passes.
I've got State of Georgia Governor's Office of Highway Safety Pedestri-
Motion second to approve item two. Any discussion on that? Please cue it, and Mr. City Manager, if you would, read what that is.
That's a pedestrian bicycle safety grant, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Or as awarded, there's no match, and that's simply to apply for that grant. Next, I've got the FY twenty-four holiday schedule.
Motion second to approve holiday schedule. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue the vote. Councillors, you can register yours.
Monday, July third, twenty twenty-three would be that holiday. I've got fiscal of twenty twenty-three exigent vehicle purchases.
Motion and a second to approve item four. Any further discussion? All right, please. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Hang on. Hang on. Let me find you. There you go.
Mr. City Manager, would you expand on that one, this one, just a little bit?
Sure.
I've had a couple of questions about.
So you have heard us come to you and share with you emergency purchases where we find vehicles on the lot. And because of supply chain, other cities and counties have been going through these lots and buying up these vehicles, and we're left at a disadvantage. And for a simple vehicle like a Ford Explorer, it could take us twelve months, fifteen months to get a vehicle. And what we would like to do is when we find vehicles sitting on the lot, we'd like to be able to go and and get those vehicles like what some other communities are doing. So we're saying here, due to the ongoing supply chain issues, to make off-the-lot vehicle purchases for vehicles that have been approved as part of the budget for the remainder of FY twenty-three, with the exception of vehicles purchased using federal funds that have either been directly awarded or passed through another entity to CCG. With that exception, we would go and buy those vehicles, and we've done it for public safety.
And I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
Well, for federally funded, for federal purchases, you know, we may not do this because they require something different.
And my question, one of my questions is, is this for general government vehicles? Or is it for public safety, or for all of the above?
Well, it's gonna be for any, all of the above. If we need a vehicle in inspections and codes or IT and is out there, rather than wait twelve months because of supply chain, we're gonna go and get it.
Good, good. Thank you.
Councillor Davis.
The City Manager, I remember my dear friend that used to sit here, God rest his soul, but he used to always say, "Are you gonna deal local?"
Yeah, that's it.
And, you know, I can still hear those words. He was a big advocate of supporting local businesses. Now, I don't know what the, how this is all gonna play out, okay, when they go out to find these vehicles, but are we gonna give priority to our local dealerships or people selling in their own community? And I'll tell you the reason why. Is because when you add the numbers up, you gotta add all the other things, like taxes and property taxes and all. When you add all that up, you guys subtract it from the other line. You're not gonna get that from outside.
That's right.
It's a different deal, but these people are here, and they're doing business in our community. We should support them. So in the words of my Red McDaniel.
Red McDaniel. I can hear him now.
Is that, I'm just asking. My question is, is that kind of the approach here and how we're gonna go about this?
Yes. In fact, I was talking to Jeremy Malls. IT went and got a Ford Explorer from the local Ford dealership. I mean, a couple of weeks ago, I still got the paper tag on it. We went to the local dealership, they had it. It was what we needed, we bought it.
And granted, I hope they work with us. You know, we all live in the same community. But you know how that is. But they are, we should support our local businesses whenever we can.
Sure. So I've got on purchases, electric.
I don't think we've, I don't think we voted. We didn't vote on item four, so.
Oh, definitely, okay.
Do we have a, do we have a motion? Motion and a second. So if you would, re-cue that for item four and allow council to vote. Okay.
Well, I got, I'm coming, I'll get those. Yeah. So in purchases, I've got electric shuttles.
Move approval on A through K.
And, you know.
There's a motion and a second to approve all of the purchases lying in A through K. Are there, is there one or more that council would like to pull for further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, if you would, please go through and enumerate those purchases. Mr. Hugher.
First of all, I've got the electric shuttle. And if Metra, I believe they're here, why don't you come up? Because, Mayor, you've been talking about the electric shuttle. But I'm gonna go through these, and then I want them to briefly tell you what this is about. But that's the electric shuttles that we have been talking to you about. These are golf carts and total cost for four of those. And these are gonna be uptown. And we are hearing from the Trade Center and hotels and everybody. They're anxious for us to get the service going. But they're one hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and nine dollars. We've got roofing consulting services. We've got architectural engineering services where we put architects and engineers on contract that we don't have to go through a lengthy process when we need to put a roof on a building. It won't take us four months to go through an RFP. We can go out and get one of the ones we've already put through the process, and we can get that roof on the building. Got concession food items, supplies, equipment for the civic center. Got, have kitchen equipment for the Musco County Prison. Repair of off-road dump truck for Public Works. I've got weapons and accessories for the Sheriff's Office. Ambulance is with equipment for fire EMS. I know that Fire EMS, they're excited about that. We've got fire service apparatus with equipment for fire EMS. We've got level-three ballistic vests and accessories for the Sheriff's Office and truck vaults and truck bed covers for the Sheriff's Office. Those are the purchases, Mayor and council.
All right, Mr. Evans.
And so, I do want Metra to talk to us about what we're gonna do with the electric shuttle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. We're here today just to give you an update. And I know many of you have probably heard City Manager talking about this new project coming to Uptown. We're excited about it. It's new, it's different. And so, we've been working to try to get this project going. And so, today, we're just gonna do a brief presentation just to kind of share with you and the public where we are with it. It's called Roll With Us. And so, we have the We Do Amazing. So this is Roll With Us, and the "us" is Uptown Shuttle. And so, today, our Assistant Director of Metra, Everett Fleming, is gonna do the presentation for us. And by way of introduction, Everett came to Metra about five years ago. And he came to us as the parking manager. So he spent a lot of time learning parking management and working that process. So today, our new parking manager, who's in the audience, Tarrana Crawford, we've all been working together as a team to pull this project together. So at this time, I'll ask Everett to come up and share with you. He's very knowledgeable, he knows the technical questions. So we'll let him provide that information to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Everett Fleming. To the mayor, city council, city attorney, city manager, listening and viewing audience, I just wanna thank you for allowing me to talk and speak to you about this evening, about the Uptown Shuttle. But before I get started, I just wanted to reflect a little bit about the status of our CDL bus operators. Of the fifty-two positions that we currently have, thirty are field, they're employed, they drive every day. But we're still down with twenty vacancies. We've been operating on a Saturday schedule since March of twenty twenty. We have hourly service, of course, on all of our routes. Given our shortage, this young lady behind me, you know, she drives every Saturday. She takes out her own time to drive every Saturday. We'll be utilizing, of course, non-CDL drivers to operate the Uptown Shuttles. Please keep in mind, this is a new project. Our fixed route service, of course, will not be impacted. I just wanted to give you a a brief overview, of course, of the new on-demand service. Of course, our transportation is gonna be provided using four, five-passenger solo panel, electric battery-operated golf carts. Now, we're not gonna go across Thirteenth Street due to safety reasons for our employees and passengers. I'm sorry. Again, we would not go across Thirteenth Street due to safety reasons for our employees and passengers due to the high fast traffic volume, of course. And so, we feel it'd be unsafe to do so. Now, the maximum speed of these carts, they can go up to thirty miles an hour. But on an average, top speed is twenty-five. So safety is very important. The rides, of course, are free. All you need to do is just to download an app by using your smartphone. You'll be able to find ETA times to access rides to and from your locations. Now, for those of you, of course, that do not have a smartphone, you'll be able to go to our website, just click on a link that we're gonna provide for you. It'll take you there. So you too can utilize the service using your phone or computer. Their service, of course, is gonna cover from First Avenue, from Bay to First Avenue, then, of course, from Ninth to Thirteenth Street. The service will be provided, of course, by Metra Parking Management Division staff. It's gonna be funded by T-Splus. That's our Transportation Special Purpose Local Option sales tax. Now, we look at, of course, our current vendor here locally, given their software application that they're using with Fleet Management. Of course, we were very impressed. But by using this application, of course, we know that it is gonna save us time and money and be very cost-effective. And we can utilize them since they are already on the city contract. Now, this next slide, of course, we just wanted to give you some examples of some themes that we were proposing. Please note that these are not final. This is just a sample of idea of possibilities. Themes like the pet adoption, the arts, the Chattahoochee River, and music. Again, just a brief overview of things that could happen in Uptown Columbus. Now, this map that you see, of course, all the boundary lines, of course, are outlined in red so you can visibly see our service coverage areas that we are trying to address. Again, those areas are from Bay Avenue to First and from Ninth to Thirteenth Street. Our project timelines, currently, things are still in development stages, of course. We are ordering our carts and apps are being programmed to fit our needs. We were anticipating a pilot program to be ready before the summer of twenty-three. But unfortunately, due to supply and demand, the completion of our carts would not be available until about six to seven months. But we are doing everything in our power to push along this process. Now, with this understanding, once everything is complete, Columbus, you will be ready to roll with us. At this time, I'll take any questions.
And Mayor, and Councillor, if I may say, because he called me the other night and said, because I know you've gotten emails from CBB and from the Trade Center. He says, "We gotta make them know that this is not a service specific to their organizations. This is for all, any, and all citizens who are coming into Uptown." And I says, "I'll make sure that I make that very clear" that, because, you know, the Trade Center, they're ready for it, and Peter Bowden's ready for it, and everybody wants it. It is for everybody. So I just wanna make that clear.
Well, and it's a safety feature, too, because you can take people right to their vehicle inside the garage and wait for them to get in.
Yeah, hotels are calling, restaurants are calling, they're ready for it, so.
Councillor Kogle.
I think this is very exciting for Uptown, for sure. It'll ease some of the congestion and parking issues that some of the businesses have down there, especially on those concert nights. My question is, do you know if the, on the app that we'll be using, if you'll be able to collect user data that Columbus twenty twenty-five or the Travel Bureau or Uptown is gonna be able to use to be able to market? or the Travel Bureau or Uptown is gonna be able to use to be able to market to those individuals? So that we, I mean, so we know who is coming downtown and um, who is using our amenities? So that we can, oh, excuse me, uh, so that we can better target those, that marketing? Because I know twenty-twenty-five has expressed some marketing dollar issues. Um, but is this something that we can um, utilize citywide?
Yes, it should be with the app, yes.
Okay.
Well, well, and I know that on our fare boxes, we can collect survey information. They just punch codes, and so you you're gonna make sure that we're able to do something similar to that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's great.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Given the entertainment districts that we're putting in down there, are we gonna let people get on board if they have an alcoholic beverage or not? Somebody's gonna try unless we tell them they can't.
Well, I I will say answer for them, the answer is no.
Okay, that's fine.
They're gonna have to discard their alcoholic beverage to get on our vehicle.
Mayor Protem?
Um, great presentation.
Thank you.
Wanted to ask uh, two questions. One, no CDO is required. So you have jobs available, right? Or you will have soon as you get them in?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, we'll be interviewing first thing in the morning.
Okay. And the other, did you say they were electric?
Yes, they're solar-powered, battery-electric golf carts.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's all the questions. Oh, sorry. Counselor Tucker?
Um, Mayor Protem brought up a good point in reference to jobs. On Friday, I have been spotlighting um, jobs on DJ Chip's um, show from four to five. And I actually mentioned Metro. And I got a phone call from a few people, and they wanted to know kind of like what the hiring process is once they do an interview. And it seemed like they probably would get the job, like how long that it does that take? So from the time they do the application, do the interview, how long is it gonna take for them to know that, you know, they they have employee employment? Because I've heard several people say they've applied and they never, you know, received kind of like a follow-up. So I just wanted to see how that works.
So, once a person submits their application and HR receives it, and they are sending those applications to us because they know our situation. So they're getting them to us as fast as they can. It, from the date that we interview them, and we're turning interviews every week, um, it typi- typically takes HR about two weeks. If we make a job offer to someone and put them into the system, in about two weeks, they are starting, if they pass everything with HR. They have to go through, uh, meet all of the requirements, you know? And sometimes there may be a little bit of a delay because HR is trying to reach the person to complete some online information. And and they will make several attempts to do that. But generally, it doesn't take more than two weeks for them to, because we're we're anxious to get them. So if you know anyone, please, 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 have them call us. And with the pay study and the increase, we're starting to fill positions. They're they're starting to come in. So, you know, we don't anticipate that it's gonna be too long before the positions will be filled. But the number is seven zero six two two five four five eight one.
Yeah, because I'm sure you're tired tired of driving on Saturdays.
Yes, sir, every Saturday. And I take a bus out, and I bring a bus in at night because I don't want my staff. I want them to be off in the daytime because they have families, children. So I let them take the early shift, and I take the late shift. So I bring the bus in at night.
Counselor Thomas?
Um, would you give us um, again, the the time that that the shuttles will be operating? Uh, is it gonna be seven days a week from this time to this time? Or have you made those decisions yet?
Uh, those decisions, ma'am, have not been uh, final. But uh, we have suggested times, of course, as early as between eleven and eight PM. Uh, some as early as eight o'clock in the morning. So but again, once the staff and others uh, sit down and evaluate, uh, of course, we will give you an update at that time.
And you think it'll be seven days a week?
No, ma'am.
No.
Uh, just Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
These are some suggested times we got from Uptown. Because we've been communicating with Uptown, you know, from the beginning of the process. We're ready to talk with CBB and some others. We talked with uh, Haley at the Trade Center. But we wanted to make sure we let you all know. And plus, you know, we didn't want to put any misinformation out because there were things we started doing and we changed in the process. So we didn't want to take off running and and have people thinking, you know, this these things are gonna be starting next month. So we're ready now that City Manager has asked us to update you all to meet with other organizations and share with them what we know. But yes, ma'am, it'll be Monday through Saturday at this point unless you all decide something different or the service dictates something different. Um, and so that's kind of where we are, but but not on Sunday.
Well, and and I think I'd like to see it later on Friday and Saturday nights.
Yeah.
Uh, beyond the eight o'clock because Uptown activity, yeah, there's a lot going on in Uptown.
And I think you did say ten um, on Friday and Saturday night, Mr. City Manager.
And we're gonna start with four shuttles, uh, and hopefully have to increase that, right?
Well, we are gonna, we're purchasing four, we're gonna see how three will do. And if we need four, we just wanna make sure if something goes wrong, we have a backup. But yes, if it, whatever this council decides.
It looks good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rose.
No, is that it, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor, so I have a few add-ons. And I don't do add-ons since the the directive to um, send it to you on Friday or don't put it on. But, you know, I've got, someone called me yesterday and there are five or six grants. The finance director text uh, emailed me and said, you know, can you put the add these on your agenda? I said, I don't do add-ons, you know? And she says, well, if they don't apply by the first, I believe, she said, of uh, March, you're not gonna get the grants. So I told them, tell them to come to council. And uh, assume they're here. And um, and so I'm gonna have them to stand, and you can ask questions about these add-ons and whether you want to approve them or not. But the first add-on I want to do has to do with um, uh, has to do with a legislative agenda item. And um, this is a parcel or tract uh, lying west of the east side of Fourth Avenue um, and south of Fourth Street. And extending across the Chattahoochee River to the south boundary of the city of Columbus. Uh, and this goes back to January nineteen twenty-eight. And so this council, we want our delegation to know desires to remove any impediments to the use and uh, to the conveyance of the property or any portion thereof that may still be in effect from the eighteen seventy-three or subsequent local acts or the nineteen twenty-eight D. And so we are asking you to approve, send into our legislative delegation a request to support an amendment to House Resolution one five seven, which is pending in the current twenty-twenty-three legislative session, which will rescind any restrictions on the property described above. And so we're asking your approval.
Second?
Motion second to approve the add-on. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? One opposed, okay? If you would, uh, raise your right hand if you're in favor.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Should've been nine, that's.
Oh, that's one.
Okay.
Two calls, Mayor Protem. Oh, sorry.
I think there's one of them. Nine to one. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next few are grants uh, that uh, we've got staff here. Um, but the first one is a veterans treatment. Okay.
Motion and a second to approve the three grants that have been added on to the agenda? Is it five? Okay.
Yeah.
All five grants that have been added to the agenda. Any discussion on any of these? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
So one grant is a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine twenty-seven thirty with a twelve percent cash match. Um, and the next one is uh, adult drug felony court grant, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and has a twelve percent match. Um, the next one is a family drug court accountability court state grant. It's three hundred thousand dollars. Um, the next one is a family drug court accountability grant. Um, it's two million dollars, so I'm sorry, two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars. And then uh, I've got a juvenile drug court accountability court state grant. It's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And those are the grants uh, that we, you're, you've voted on to add on. And with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I've got just one final presentation. We've got Cure Violence representatives here. And um, I am going to ask uh, Mr. Reggie Lewis uh, to come forward. He may have Jerome Lawson with him, their new executive director. But um, I see Cedric Hill here with him and uh, but uh, Mr. Reggie Lewis.
Mr. Jerome had to step outside for a minute to get one of our other staff. But um, wanna say thank you all, you know, City Council, Mayor, City Manager. We're having us here today to kind of give you an update. We apologize for not sending more regular updates. We've really been trying to focus on what we were wanting to do. Uh, what I wanna talk about today is a little bit of the current state, but also talk about the future state, where we're going. But to give you some important updates of who we've hired and some of the things that we're working on. So to talk about the current state, when we were here before, we talked about the difficulty of what we were trying to hire for. Uh, we had over thirty applicants uh, apply for the positions. We had eight that we progressed to what we called a panel interview. That panel interview consisted of people from different sectors, uh, Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Department of Labor, uh, Piedmont Hospital, Pastoral Institute, and a couple other areas that we had represented. Um, one of the things we had to do was we had to advocate a little bit because we do come underneath the Health Department, which is the State Department. It had some challenges and some barriers that we had to overcome. One being a requirement for GED, but also ensuring that we were paying above livable wages. Uh, one of the things we come in, come into contact with is who we are hiring and the job title that we were talking about did not fall into anything that it had on their record. So a lot of things that pulled up were maintenance records. So that is not what we were looking for, but we were able to get it on the social tech. So we were able to lobby to get the GED requirement dropped, which opened the application process up to additional people. Uh, as uh, City Manager spoke, we did come across our director, which is Jerome Lawson. He'll be back in in a few. Uh, Jerome came to us. We met him at an event where we set up an event between Piedmont Hospital ER staff and community, community advocates that work on the south side of town. And we had them in a meeting to kind of introduce them to each other. The reason why we had that meeting was to really show what the ER staff was dealing with, but also what the community advocates were working with. And out of that meeting, Jerome was part of that meeting, and that was the first time we met him. But as we went forward through the interview, uh, while we were doing the interview, our consultant from Cure Violence Global also had been in one of the prisons that Jerome was in. So to give you a little bit of information about who and the and the type of people that we're looking for, Jerome uh, went to prison for armed robbery at sixteen. He spent ten years in prison. Uh, he got out of prison, had, you know, ten years of parole. But he also started a food truck. He came from three-one-nine-on-three area, Elizabeth County area, area. His father and stepfather, his mother, all in in that lifestyle that doesn't bode well for a young man. But he was basically told to go rob a store because he was sixteen, he would get off. And unfortunately, he was caught, and he spent ten years in prison at age sixteen. Also have Kenyatta with us, who's our new hire as well. I'm not gonna talk about her case yet. She may not be comfortable with it. Jerome and I have talked about it, but she also has some of their experience. I tell you that because who we're trying to hire are people who can relate to those communities. That is what is important to us. And what we understand and what we know is, if we don't work to get people that these areas need and they know, we're not gonna make a change. And I heard a lot of people here tonight talk about some of the things that what we need to do, you know, what the police need to do. It's not just left up to them. We all have to be part of that solution. We can't just simply sit back and want somebody else to do it for us. This is the action that came to us in our Cure Violence team is, we wanna be part of that action. We're not here to override what everybody else is doing. We're here to collaborate. We're here to enhance what they're doing by providing the methodology and a system that will work, that will help reduce the violence in our community. One of the things with us hiring people, we are working to make sure they have development skills. We're teaching them mediation training. We're also giving them training with Microsoft three sixty-five, as well as any kind of development training that they need. We don't expect them to stay with us beyond three years. Why? Because of the work that they will be dealing with. It's sort of like being a police officer. You deal with negativity, you deal with death, you deal with a lot of um, issues in the community that can be hard on somebody. You heard a gentleman talk about PTSD. This is similar. So we don't want them just to be working with us five and ten years, and then we having to put them into mental care. So the idea is to give them the development. Because they work underneath the state, they have an opportunity to get better-paying jobs that maybe they were not used to. Because we're working with them to make sure that they get their GED. That's important as well. A lot of people we're dealing with don't have a GED, so that's the reason why we work to get that removed. One other thing is, we continue to to do our interviews. We have six more positions that we need to hire. We wanna have a full staff because we need everybody to be on board. One of the things that we're working on very heavily is the MOUs. Uh, you have some of the people from behind me, uh, from Piedmont Hospital. We signed a MOU with Piedmont Hospital to have our staff in the hospital in the ER. The reason why is we see an issue where when gunshot wound victims come in, uh, in a year's time, we had about three hundred and seventy-two gunshot victims come to Piedmont Midtown. If you take an average of that, a nationwide average is about thirty to thirty-four thousand dollars per event. And that's the extended care that goes with it. That's about eleven to twelve million dollars that you're looking at in that situation. The other part to it is, when we have those victims come in, their families are coming with them. And a lot of times, it is very hard for the ER staff to do their jobs because you have the chaos in the in the emergency room waiting room. So with our staff there, we can be the mediators. We can also be the translators in the sense of when the doctors are trying to give care to uh, the victim, but also tell the family members or whoever is there with them what needs to be done. We can help facilitate that, removing the frustration for the doctors, but also removing the frustration from the families. Because many times, the perspective is that the ER staff doesn't care about the victims. And Jessica Carter, standing behind me, is one of those, the staff that talks about the many times somebody comes in that ER shop, and she sees them two or three times, and then that fourth time, they're taking them to the morgue. So it is not that they don't care. They're sitting there, working their hearts out to save these people who are coming into the emergency room. But you have to think, they're thinking about, is that somebody's father? Is that somebody's son? Is that somebody's daughter? Because we're seeing an increase in the young ladies coming in as well. So that's the reason why we signed that MOU, to give them assistance, but also reduce the violence and for those people coming back multiple times. Because we also saw that, where they're coming in two and three times with gunshot wounds. So we're making sure that we tackle all the different areas that we can to reduce the violence in our community. Uh, we also did uh, a MOU with United Way uh, for the Handelwood Care Program. And that is a program where it's a communication network where if we're out in the streets, we're visiting a site where we had a shooting. We can also notify a system that will allow us to say, hey, Johnson Elementary or Dorothy Heights, we had a shooting, this child may be impacted by this shooting. The reason why is, what we know is, we just had that incident uh, on the seventeenth where several of the kids attended Johnson Elementary. We actually got the call to say, hey, young lady came in, she was talking about the incident. She was actually one of the kids that was in the car. She was actually one of the kids that was in the car. She was sitting next to the five-year-old. Luckily, the teacher said she was feeling good that morning, talking about the incident, but by lunchtime, she broke down and was crying because she thought that could have been her. So, because of that system, we can immediately activate. And the Muscoy County School District does have a system in place to provide grief counseling. But that is just another step that we're stepping into. So, if we're on the scenes, we can be another communication effort to assist the police department or whoever's investigating to get that information out to the schools in that state, to ensure that they're taken care of. We also continue our focus on funding. We've applied for several grants. Unfortunately, we were not awarded those grants. We're not sad about that. We are probably new to the game of writing grants. We're working on getting a grant writer to help us focus in on how we need to submit those grants, but we're not going to stop. And as you can see, yes, we are asking for one point two million. Reason why some of these grants is, we can't do it with just six. We really need probably about thirty to forty violence interrupters and out grief workers to cover a good part of this city. You know, Wilson Apartments is a very bad hotspot that we need to get on. The six that we are working on right now will cover three-one-nine-on-six, and we still need more in that area because we know the crime is getting even worse in that area. But those are some of the grants that we're working on. We also have secured a spot at Valley Health Services. So, we have right in the middle, three-one-nine-on-three, a spot where our violence interrupters can go, enter the information, and as well, be able to talk with clients. We will be keeping a database, and I know Councilman Davis, you were concerned about metrics. As I told you before, we will have a database that we will use to kind of provide those metrics and to keep on top of what we're doing. Those metrics will also include anything that we do in the hospital. So, reducing the number of events that we have, so gunshot wounds coming into the hospital, we will have metrics on that as well. So, those will be some of our baselines that we will use to kind of identify how we're improving and how we're working. But also to make sure y'all understand how we're utilizing the funding that you've provided to us. Some of the community efforts that we are highlighting and working on, number one is reentry initiative with the Mayor's Commission as well. But one of the things we know is, for reentry, right now, is very difficult when gentlemen or men and women get out of prison. You know, Georgia has about seventeen thousand people released and back into the community every year. One of the biggest issues that we find is, and a lot of people don't understand, is when the folks get out of prison, if they don't have an address, there's potential that they could be sent back to prison because they don't have an address. That's one of the requirements. I don't think a lot of people understand that. So, when you hear people talk about folks going back into prison, a lot of people think they did something wrong. A lot of times, they don't have an address. And it's not very easy to get an address. And I'm talking about, I'm going to put sets offenders and some of those guys aside, but we're talking about felons. A lot of times, they can't get addresses. So, we're working with Pat and her team and that community network, with Homeless Network, to try to understand how we can reduce some of these guys coming out and not having a place, an address that they can call home. It's very important because now we're putting them back in the system because they don't have an address. That's not correct. That's not right. It is, they're not able to pull up and say, I have money or funding to buy an address, get a house or get an apartment. And then we throw on top of them, you're a felon. Now, we're not even giving them any type of chance. So, we're working through those, and those are the things that we need to do to kind of reduce, you know, recidivism. Also, to give them an opportunity to survive. Giving them an opportunity to live. Giving them an opportunity to really step, come back in the community and be something and have a purpose. That's one of the things we were focused on. The other one is transitional housing, which goes along with that. Is working with Safe House and some of these other transition houses to make sure we understand exactly what is needed for them to be put in those places. But also to understand how we can lobby for anything that is missing or the barriers that come about with that. And then, the two-on-one directory is a big deal. That's been around for several years, and we've heard a lot of complaints, good and bad, about what goes on two-on-one. Two-on-one is the director of all the services that basically are provided to people on a sliding scale or for free. One of the issues that we found, and what Jerome has been doing is, we've sent clients to some of the services that were provided on that site, and the client was turned away. Well, they had a lot of requirements that did not show up on the site. So, one of the initiatives that we want to do is ensure that we have the right clients on there, but also we have all the procedures related to it so that we don't want to take somebody to a service, and then they get turned away because they already don't have hope. And now, we take them somewhere, and then we're turning them away again. So, all we just did is confirm that, you know, there's no hope for them. They're hopeless. So, we want to make sure that anybody that's on the site, you follow what you say and the people you say you will service, but also, you tell us upfront what the requirements are so we can have a quick, smooth, efficient process when we take people to these services. Any questions so far? I feel like I'm talking fast and... Some of the other community efforts that we did, you know, we partnered with the Civic Center as well as YMCA. We did three esports events. These were events where we set up gaming systems, everything from PlayStation to Nintendo. And we played tournament-style events with NBA basketball, Madden, NFL, and I can't even remember the other one. But we did, the last one we did was with the Rapid Soccer Team. We had about a hundred kids. We took them out on the soccer field, and the teams, some of the team players were there. They did challenges with the students, and we gave away prizes at that event. We also participated, engaged in, you know, Partial Rets had their basketball league where we worked with them. That was a partnership with Rowdy Club of Columbus. But we also did, one of the big ones we did was probably over two to two-hundred-and-fifty kids was the Boys and Girls Club Team Summit. This is one we continue, we will do again this summer. In conjunction that week, we probably had about four hundred kids total that were probably impacted by the two events. And that was Sandmark, who put on a basketball event at Carver and YMCA, along with that Team Summit that Thursday and Friday night. That Friday night, we had basketball, dance, and a cafe set up at the South Columbus Boards Club. We had almost a hundred and fifty kids that night from six to ten-thirty. That's important because we had them off of the street. That was a hundred kids we could physically see. We're also working with Turnaround Columbus and the Victory Garden. That's an important piece because that addresses the food insecurities in our community. What we're doing is partnering with the Rowdy Club of Columbus, where we had our members come out, help fix up the garden. They brought tractors. We were building a greenhouse. But the most important part is, we're trying to partner them with food meals. Because now, that gives us two places that are providing healthy food options on two different sides of town. That's important because we know that one of the factors that impacts violence in our community is poverty, food insecurity, and education. And we're trying to address that with that partnership because we think there are some synergies and some energy that we could put in that garden. And now, we cover a big part of our city that has some food insecurities. The other thing we're doing is, Jerome was out canvassing and met two guys that we thought would be great on our team. This was before we got the GED drop. They didn't have a GED or a high school diploma. We were immediately able to take them to Goodwill and give them a pre-test, which is for, if they pass the pre-test, we give them five hundred dollar vouchers to take the GED course. So, that was helpful in that situation. And as I said earlier, we did a collaboration with the Rowdy Club of Columbus, as well as Startup Columbus, where we had some students from Carver High School. We did an entrepreneurial class. And then, I teach and share the Leadership Columbus class. And one of the things I do is, I have about thirty students every year, and I share what we're trying to do in the community and how they can be a part of it. And our class is built on teaching them, y'all are the new leaders of our community, and we need you to understand what the barriers and gaps are in our community. So, we're working with them as well. And then, the Friday night event is with the Boys and Girls Club, where we're planning to do multiple events every month and have that consistency with our students. Unfortunately, on the seventeenth, we had an event that night. And as I left, I got a text right after I left that kids had been shot, and my heart dropped because I thought it was the kids we just had saw. So, you understand the importance of what we've got to do in this community. We need more of that. We need more people involved. We will continue on with our process. Our twenty-three outlook for Q1 is transition operation over to Jerome, which we've already done. You know, work to fill those remaining slots, continue our pursuit of additional funding. Get the, we do have the MOU signed with Piedmont, but partner with the Boys and Girls Club on the next Team Summit, and the night's out, Friday night's out. And then, work to try to have a reentry beta program. And what I mean by that is, we want to have something where, an example of what we're working on is, six months from somebody being released, can they start taking certificate programs like the Technical College, Georgia Technical College System? There's twenty-one certificate programs. Not all are available if you have a felon, but some of them are. Have them start working on that program six months out. But also be prepared, once they get out, they're immediately finishing up. Because there's a ninety-eight percent employment rate with those certificate programs. That is a good way to get them prepared and ready to go when they hit the streets. They're able to have a job or have an opportunity to get a job. So, that's one of the things. The other thing that we're trying to do with that program is also identify some of the barriers. Most of the folks coming out don't have IDs, don't have birth certificates, important key information. And you get two times to apply for these where you're in prison. And because of timing, a lot of times, they apply for where they're in, they get out, they go back and apply again at the Health Department or at the Driving License Bureau, and they use up those two times. So, we want to ensure that we got that network in place and a process in place that they don't miss those opportunities. These are just, I know you can't read that small, but these are the applications that are out on the West Central District Health Department. They're legit, they're in the State Department. One of the things I will tell you, we got a lot of applicants that, I know Councilman Garrett was saying we could apply and send them over to one of our departments here, but a lot of people who we talked with didn't understand what we were talking about, even though we got that description in there. This is a very, these are vital positions that we are hiring for. And a lot of people just didn't understand. They were just, oh, you know, I'm fresh out of high school or college, and I'm a history major, and I just want to see if I can do this job. Like, no, you can't do this job. One of the things we learned throughout this process, though, is we had to change our mindset. Because the people who want to come in, who they are and how they are. We had a young man that walked in, he spent twenty-two years in prison for murder. We have an opportunity to hire him. And that's big from a state perspective because we're not looking at him as still that. But we know he will be very valuable to our team and give us the best opportunity to change what's happening in these communities. So, I understand that we're changing lives with this process. And we continue to work forward and move forward, we're trying to do that. But we will always have what we believe is a circle of progress. Create the opportunities, include everybody in this process, establish the relationships because those are key. If we don't have the relationships, we don't have any movement. The collaboration. Like we said earlier, we're not here to take over what everybody else is doing. We're here to collaborate with them because it's important that we have multiple entities involved in this process. We're just providing some framework that we know will work. And then, the leadership. The leadership part is key. Understanding what we're doing and having the fortitude to give the vision and the expectations, and showing them how to execute. That's important as far as the leadership. And the last one, the education. The communities have to be educated on what's going on. What we've seen a lot of times in the communities is that we are seeing hopelessness. They don't know there's opportunity out there for them. They don't understand they can get out of this. And with our workers coming in, they are fine examples of, yes, you can. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to turn it over to Jerome, let him come up, introduce himself. And then, with me, I have Ms. Kenyatta, who's our first violence interrupter that we just hired. We have Pat Fray. We have Jessica Carden. She works in the ER. This lady gave us a fabulous story. She was the one that gave that statement of, I don't see him as somebody who's black. I see him as somebody's son, somebody's nephew, somebody's father, you know, somebody's brother. And of course, my main man Cedric. But I'm going to have Jerome start off. Any questions before I do that?
Yeah, Counselor Davis.
Mr. Lewis, thanks for coming. And thanks for mentioning that part about what I think is a, is key in the success of the organization and what you're trying to accomplish with measuring results. I think that is key, is key in the community. You touched on something that's been on my mind for a while, but this two-on-one aspect, we'll call it two-on-one. Who actually monitors that?
So, it's Candace Monson, but it's under United Way.
It's under United Way?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's a national, I think, if I'm saying correctly, it's a national program.
Okay. Well, you know, there has been a concern, and I talked, I think we had some people come in from the 2025 Initiative at one time about being able to make a better roadmap or better connectivity for the very people you talked about. And then, you know, you cited, you just shared with us some of the incidents that you're seeing out there, which is shares, I shared some of the concerns as well. And so, I really want our community, our city, all those involved to focus on that so we can better point people in the right direction. And when they get there, they can get the assistance or help or whatever it is needed at that point. And I think we can do that. I don't think we're there yet, but I think we're going there. And I think you just touched on that, and I'm glad you did. But I think there's some wonderful things that can come out of that. Because a lot of people are, you know, they may be technologically challenged, and they just need an easy way to have that roadmap to get to what they need as soon as possible. Where else, you know, they just, they lose hope.
Right.
They lose hope.
Right.
And so, thank you for sharing that. That resonated.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just want to introduce Kenyatta back quick. Kenyatta, come up here, come up here, come up here. This is a God scene right here. She has a unique story, and I look forward to sharing that story. But I want to introduce her first because, other than myself, she's the second new hire. We're working on three more people that are in the process of being hired. So, we'll be halfway to our mark of the eight interrupters that we need. But I want you all to see her face because you all are going to see our faces a lot more in the community. So, it has been a lot of questions about what has Cure Violence been doing in the community. I've been in Wilson Apartments, I've been on Winston Road, I've been in Oakwood Park, I've been on Forest Road. I have had my feet on the grounds in these communities. I've been around them while they're smoking their weed, while they got their guns sticking out their pants. And while I've been hearing the talks, I've just been focusing on developing the relationships in the community that's needed to bridge this gap with this misconception about what's going on in our community. While our leaders are fighting, our children are dying. And that's the problem. You know, the Bible says, the head is sick, the whole body is sick. And our leaders have to get together, and we have to cohesively approach this thing that we're dealing with. There is a gang problem in Columbus. But in my opinion, gangs aren't bad if they're for a good cause. The Vikings started gangs. That meant, the word gang meant to go on a journey, either by yourself or with like-minded people. But unfortunately, the ball was dropped somewhere, and you had guys who developed their own identity to protect themselves. So, you got gangs who formulated other gangs and became subcategories of gangs to basically stand for themselves because they saw what we call an discreet flaw in other organizations. So, they developed this mentality that we would be our own, and nobody would change that. And what happened is, we haven't taught them the direction that they need. So, they came up with their own way and their own agenda. They're going to rap, they're going to hustle, they're going to make their money, and nobody's going to tell them otherwise. And that's why we see our children becoming the collateral damage. We see our elders and our women becoming the collateral damage of beasts that are in the street that we tend to not want to understand. So, I've been going in the community, and that's the beauty of Cure Violence. You can't take somebody who's never played the game and expect them to coach you to a championship. We're using people who are culturally disconnected from the communities and expecting them to promote change. It's not going to happen. So, thank God for the Department of Health and Cure Violence for allowing people like myself and Ms. McKenzie to come on board and speak the language to the people that need to hear the message. And that message is, the community needs to be revived. The community needs to get back to policing itself and being trained on what a community is. We got to get back to that community sphere. Our recreation is gone. There's nothing to do. All the traffic points towards either Uptown or the north side of Columbus. If they're going up there, they're going up to take something. Because if you're starving, you can't expect to pull a truck full of steaks up in a starving neighborhood and expect for it not to get broken into. That's just not what's going to happen. I had a lady call me last night, Ms. Herring. It's a father in terminal court who had somebody threatening to shoot his house up with his son, and she was like, he needs a place to go. That's the reality. I heard the young guy talk about Lake Bottom. That's the reality of certain people every night. Every night. I sit in the three-one-nine oh-seven area, I hear gunshots all the time. My baby said, dad, what is that? And I tell her it's gunshots, I don't lie to her. Cause we're in dangerous times right now and we are working hard, I'm working hard. And it's gonna take a long time for us to get ahead of this momentum. You can't get in front of a train and stop. But we need to be prepared for when it slows down and when it derails. When our children begin to change. Eventually, this culture is gonna slow down, they're gonna change, they're gonna start waking up, they're gonna start getting older like myself. Especially if you're in prison, you're gonna start looking back over your life and realizing, I wanna see my child grow up. I wanna see my mother smile. The reality is gonna set in, we need to be ready for when that happens. So what we're doing now, I'm developing relationships with all the organizations. I'm not trying to bicker about who got money, who's not getting money. I'm trying to say, if you won't change, we're gonna set aside differences and we're gonna work together to make it happen. That's what's gonna make this work. Gotta come together. So as Director of Cure Violence, I've set foot in the Freedom House, I've set foot in the Safe House, I went to, uh, House of Mercy. I went there as if I was trying to get sheltered. I wanted to see how people are treating people like myself. Even tonight, people were looking at me sideways, just because I'm, I may look different. It just represents the culture of where we are right now. And really, nothing is wrong with being yourself, be yourself. Just don't impose who you are on somebody else and expect them to think how you think. But like the Bible says, in all that getting, we have to get an understanding. And I'm not blaming leadership because to be honest with you, until the community recognizes what it needs to do, leadership is gonna be leadership, right? And that's what I'm trying to revive. I'm trying to revive the community leaders and I'm working within the community. And you all are gonna see that, I'm trying to rally the churches. Whoever is willing to get in front of this and do something about it, I'm developing a relationship with them. And they can contact me, my information is on the DPH website. You can look up Cure Violence and you can reach out to any of us. Because the whole goal is to make something happen. The blame is on all of us. And not to blame us if we did something wrong. The blame is the fact that we've stood around long enough and it's time for us to be a part of the change that we want, right? I'm quite sure all of us can agree on that. So I spoke with leaders, I meet with many more people, developing these relationships. I've taken pictures in the community, y'all can look at on the Cure Violence Facebook page and see that. We're on social media, we're doing commercials. We're trying to match the momentum of what we see. When you go on Facebook, you see the money, you see the smoking. I'm taking pictures trying to show them the community efforts that we're making. And as a result of that, our violence interrupters are gonna be in these communities and tools when we get to full staff in these hotspot areas collecting data and information. Cause the biggest thing that a lot of these people need, they want a way out. We just gotta show them how to get it. Some people can't, they're not gonna say I'm homeless. I met a guy that I was in prison with at the Department of Labor. I was leaving, he was coming in and when he seen me, he said, Jerome. And I'm like, I called his name and we hugged each other, cause we were locked up as juvenile. And, um, he was like, well, man, I'm homeless, I need somewhere to go. And I'm just like, hey, let's get him a room for the night. Because the problem is you got guys who need immediate assistance. You have to wait two or three days to get in somewhere. What are you gonna do in those two or three days? You're hungry or homeless, what you gonna do? You ain't gonna fast, you gonna fast normally? You gonna do what you gotta do to survive. So I, I said, the Lord put it in my heart. Luckily, his mom, he's not even from Columbus, but he paroled out to Columbus because it's the only address he can get. So we got him help. His mama came and got him, he had a car of university, he got his car, unregistered, untagged, drove it back down here, got it registered. Thank God he didn't get caught driving. Uh, I didn't consent to that either, uh, but anyway. But thank God, you know, we got him into the Valor Rescue Mission Transitional Center. He has a job, he started orientation last week. That was just one guy, aside from the other two guys we got in a GD program. But progress is progress, right? Either it be slow or fast, it's progress. I'm still a fast progress, by the way. But we got him in the program and that just speaks to the effort of what we're doing. That one can become ten and that ten can become twenty, if we are allotted the time to make the process work. And we get better as we go. Cause a lot of you all, to be honest with you, a lot of you all can't tread foot in some of the places that I went. That's just, but that's a beautiful thing. Because I can go stand in a gap and connect the relationships and make it work. But I need the people who aren't connecting these people on this side with to be in, understanding enough to say, we're willing to help you. We're willing to change policies if that's what it means, like with the DPH system. They changed the requisites to hire people. When I tell people, it's a state job, it's a state job, I'm like, yes, it is, congratulations. We're trying to help. And the, and the hurtful part is, like Reggie was speaking earlier about hope. What happens when you got a person who don't know what hope is? What happens then, right? So we have to show them what hope is and that's what I'm doing. I'm showing them what hope is in the community and developing these partnerships, pushing Cure Violence forward. Cause we can all cure violence if we do it together.
Jerome, thank you. Very excited about you being the Director of that organization and seeing it get going. And Reggie, I've done a great job. Any other questions?
And we'll come back once a month, Mayor, make sure we get all.
Thank you for everything y'all are doing.
And, and Mayor, I do want to thank Reggie and Cure Violence, but, um, you know, Jerome, we're gonna have to get you. I didn't realize you were such a good speaker.
That's on his own.
Yeah. And so, uh, we're gonna have to get you at some churches and some other places and on CCGTV. I mean, you, very, well done.
Counselor Huff?
Yeah, uh, Mr. City Manager, I was just getting ready to jump in. I was just telling, Counselor Thomas was speaking about how well you spoke.
Yeah.
I told her I was with you at Fleellen Rex Center one night when you wowed the whole crowd and got control of a situation that was going left. But, uh, very proud of you, we talk from time to time, so just keep up the good work and you know I'm here, so give me a call.
And I, I'll, I'll talk to you. Well, I, I'm just saying, I, I mean, he, you're, you're, yeah. I'm speechless, but you, 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 you do well. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the, uh, Clerk's Agenda. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. For the Clerk's Agenda, have one item of information. It's a Certificate of Need application submitted on behalf of the Columbus Memory Center. The project is to develop a mobile PET imaging service. Item number two is a resolution to excuse.
Motion second to approve the resolution, uh, excusing Counselor Davis. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Item three is a travel authorization request for Counselor Huff.
Motion to approve item three. Any, and a second, any discussion to that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes.
Item number four, this is a memorandum, uh, from Peter Bowden on behalf of the CCV Board. He's requesting that the seat of Ms. Mamie Pown be declared vacant.
Need a motion?
These councils come.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second to receive, which, uh, by receiving would declare that seat vacant. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Item five are minutes of various boards we received.
Mo- uh, there's a motion, is, was there a second? Motion second to receive the minutes. Anybody wanna pull one of those or any additions? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners for the seat that was just declared vacant. Mayor Henderson is nominating Ms. Michelle Spivey.
All right, it's motion second to confirm Ms. Spivey. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have the Housing Authority of Columbus, Mr. Edward Burtishaw. This is the mayor's appointment.
I'll bring you a nominee by next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Building Authority of Columbus, we have two seats that are open for nominations. The seat of Leela Carr and Vincent Allen. For the Employees Benefits Committee, we have the seat of Timothy Smith, that's open for nominations. This is the sworn officer seat. He is eligible to serve another term if a member of council wanted to make that nomination. And then we'll double check with him to make sure he's still interested. So Mayor Protem has made that nomination and we'll bring this back for the next meeting. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, the seat of Katie Bishop. Counselor Crabbe is nominating Mr. Shay Spencer for this seat. And we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, we've got, uh, Pastor Flakes, uh, wanted to come back for his three minutes and, uh, Pastor Flakes, thank you for your patience. You'll have three minutes to wrap up, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I just wanna say, uh, please, when y'all come to churches, no worship. Don't tell us we stay in too long, okay? I'm just, thank you, Mr. Mayor, God bless you. I mean, uh, I, I'm just amazed. On that note, on that note, um, I, I, I do come just to really bring a, a reality that I think is very difficult for many, uh, cities to really either think about or embrace or accept. And that's where I was actually, uh, going with what I had to say earlier. And so I was, I left off by saying, I stand before this council and community to, to say it is sad to point out the reality that this type of culture still exists within our Columbus Police Department. And you may ask, well, why do you say that? It is obvious that false narratives have been constructed by a few people to try and mislead this mayor, this council, this community about Chief Blackman. This false narrative seems to be constructed by the current president of the FOP. Mayor, council members, I wanna just raise some questions. Instead of raising questions regarding the police chief, there should be serious questions raised about the FOP president while still employed as a supervising police officer in the Columbus Police Department. Insubordination and conflict of interest should be raised and dealt with. The legitimacy of an FOP survey that has been used to create division within the rank of the Columbus Police Department as well as creating anti-chief of police intentional campaign, which also need to be dealt with. False claims of reverse discrimination due to not being promoted by the current police chief when he was not promoted at least twice by the previous past police chief, even though it's raised some of the other side, uh, of that question or that concern. There are those who have bought into the self-serving, falsely constructive narrative used in other cities to oust African-American police chief. This tactic strategy is used to try to divide, attack, target the police chief and mislead this community, the mayor and city council as well. I just say, don't be misled. Regarding the Baltimore-based Jensen Hughes Incorporated Conduct Evaluation, it was to be understood that this assessment would give the Columbus Police Department under the leadership of Police Chief Blackman and City of Columbus an opportunity to come even more in line with what is considered best practices in law enforcement. It was not to be used as a source or tool to get rid of Chief Blackman. He welcomed, he welcomed the assessment. To give Chief Blackman what appeared to be an ultimatum to have a strategic plan to this council by March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, which is thirty days. This ultimatum sends a clear disturbing message that there are those on council who are entangled in this systemic racist culture that look for opportunities to discredit, devalue, destroy African-American leadership within law enforcement.
Pastor Flache.
I'm almost finished.
I'm in the unenviable position of having to enforce the, the time.
I got thirty seconds.
I'll give you ten.
So I pray I'm wrong, however, this is the optic given. What make this optic real is the previous police chief had challenges with crime, retention, recruiting, moral, not promoting the current FOP president. The council did not, to my knowledge, issue an ultimatum to former police chief during the sixteen years served, nor was an assessment used to evaluate the department during the sixteen years under his leadership. I appeal to the mayor, each city council member, to stand up and correct the narrative. Let's do amazing things by changing the deeply rooted systemic racism that's raising its ugly head.
Pastor, thank you.
I ask you to do what's right. God bless you, thank you for the time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Before we adjourn, Counselor Tucker?
I told you I was gonna give you like quick two updates, I was gonna do more from the NACO. Um, I wanna apologize to Counselor Davis, cause he was right, yep. One of the topics during the legislative update was negotiations in reference to the debt limit. What is being discussed now is a clawback of American Rescue Plan dollars. It's not only being, it's not only being talked that on the federal level, but also on the state level, cause I met with Governor Kemp yesterday and he said that, um, individuals that he feel may not, not just individuals, but counties and municipalities that applied for the dollars and received the grants. If they could not fulfill that, that actual grant process, the projects, they're actually pulling back the money at the state. At the federal level, the seventy-eight point five million that we received, so that second half, we're, we are in a potential danger of a clawback if we don't start allocating these dollars and actually spending them, especially with, um, capital improvement projects that may take a while. Like, we have to really start getting some action behind them. And I know that you had a, um, project in reference to, I think it was the pri- um, Poverty Initiative. We, I mean, that's one we could at least get kicked off, you know, now and some of the other things that we discussed. But it is a heavy conversation that's, um, being made right now in reference to the American Rescue Plan dollars. And secondly, I don't know if we are in this pilot program, but NACO has this live healthy, um, it's prescription health and dental discount for citizens and it's at no cost. And because we are a member of NACO, our residents that have problems with, um, being uninsured or underinsured can actually participate in this program, we just have to sign up for it. And, um, they can get, uh, like prescription discounts for eighty percent off of generics and forty percent off brand names. They get healthcare discounts, um, it's a, it's actually a dental program. I think they have like a telehealth, um, clinic, but all of this, um, is offered for us. And I didn't wanna just apply without coming back and, you know, all, all the county commissioners were applying, you know, on site. But I wanted to bring it back, um, to the council and let them know that these are some of the benefits that, that we can afford our citizens as members of NACO.
Great conversation with, uh, Reithor Hollowell, our HR director, and see how that fits into the plans that we're currently using. Good job.
Okay, thank you all for letting me have it.
Counselor Huff?
Mr. City Manager. Based on what Counselor Tucker was talking about and the conversation we had about windows and rooftops, will that fit? Is that something you're gonna still be able to work out a different way? We were talking about trying to put together something in the neighborhoods so people could apply to get windows replaced and rooftops. Rehab type deal.
Yes, all of those programs are coming together and, um, all of what the council member has talked about and, you know, I had a meeting with my team, I think the last week, and, uh, challenged them and, that, that we need to obligate all of our dollars like right now. So, and, and the exact conversation I had with them, if we don't spend it, they, uh, would likely come after through clawbacks and try and get it back, so we're on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that ends the business before council. Motion second adjourned, all in favor, say aye. We adjourn.